All right, we will call the meeting to order at 9:00 AM. And we'll start with a roll call and conflict of interest check. Trustee Nolte.
Here or none.
Trustee Abbott.
Here or none.
Treasurer Metz is absent currently, but will be here later. He's teaching class. Clerk Stambo Elise.
Here or none.
Trustee Sanders.
Here and none.
Trustee Sikkenga. And Supervisor Scott, here and none. We'll now move into approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes to the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Sikkenga, seconded by Abbott. Any discussion? Hearing none will move into a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, please say nay. The agenda is approved. We'll move into our first call for public comment. No members of the public here. We'll move on. And it might be, it might be, and start our discussion items. First, as we, as we go into this, I just wanted to thank everybody. I know that it's an early morning, and I think the first time, at least for this board, that we've done one of these work sessions this early. Appreciate everyone taking the time. And also, and I'll say this again, once he's here, appreciate Treasurer Metz being accommodating, knowing that he had to teach class this morning, but telling us to go ahead so that everyone else could make it, and then he'll join us later. So that is the reason that we have structured, or that I structured the agenda the way that I did. Given that one of the biggest, or the two biggest topics are single hauler trash and short-term rentals, we wanted to start with the strategic plan discussion to give Treasurer Metz a little bit of extra time to get here. So we'll dive into these items. I just want to remind everyone that since this is a work session, this is discussion only. I won't accept any motions or any kind of action. Just want to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to ask questions, talk through any of the things that they're thinking about, and really be able to dive into these issues thoroughly before we go into our September meeting. We will have a couple of folks here at a later time to answer questions as well. I believe we'll have someone here from Waste Management for questions around single hauler. And I believe that Megan will also be joining us a little bit later as we move into the short-term rentals piece. So with that, we will move right into our strategic plan overview, and I'm going to hand things over to Trustee Sikkenga.
So first of all, I wanted to thank everybody for coming. So there's two, three-hour sessions in a one-week period. So I'm very appreciative that all of you were here for the strategic planning session last week. So thank you very much. And then to come again today was, this really shows a lot of commitment. So I wanted to do a quick check-in in advance of our approving the strategic plan. So I wanted to start by looking very quickly at the vision, mission, and pillar statements. And just to hear whether anybody has any concerns about them, are we, is it okay if I propose them for approval as written, or are there any that you want to revisit? So I'm going to start by reading the vision, which is at the top of page three in your packet. "Our township preserves our natural beauty and stewards sustainable farms that," that apostrophe needs to go. "And steward sustainable farms, waterways, open space and residential areas. We enjoy clean and plentiful water resources, quality roads and infrastructure to create a fiscally and environmentally responsible, diverse collaborative, safe, welcoming, resilient, peaceful, caring, and engaged community." It's a big mouthful. Is there a desire to revisit it, or does everybody, does it sound right to all of you?
To me, it sounds a little wordy. It sounds like that last part, I mean, let's just throw everything in there, environmentally responsible, diverse, collaborative, safe, welcoming, resilient, peaceful, caring. It seems like we took a lot of buzzwords and I vote to trim it down a little.
Okay.
You're not voting.
Yeah. Then, then I say, what?
I have a thought on that.
Okay.
Because I, I just want to push back on that a bit here, because I feel like the more impeccable we are with our word, the more careful we are. It may, we may say more, but these words were really carefully selected, I think, and I think that they make it, they make, they represent clarity. So.
Okay, so I'm cutting off the discussion because we don't have time for discussion, but would I take, what I pay?
That's what we were here for.
We're here to say, do we need discussion on it? And I take it that yes, we need.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying, Karen said something, you responded, that tells me we need, we need discussion time. Because I only have a half hour, so. So then, same question for the mission. So I take it, we need to, we, we do need a little time to discuss, discuss the vision statement. Next question, do I need to make time to discuss the mission statement? Dexter Township is a welcoming, policy-driven, collaborative organization, providing efficient, effective stewardship of land, water, and resources to achieve the community vision.
I like, personally, I like that. I think that mission statement is just the right amount of words. It clarifies everything we, we want. I think it's, I think it's an impactful statement.
I like it too. Okay, so, so great. So the, the mission statement, we will not spend time on. Okay, pillars. Good government, be an example of excellence, and collaboration in township operations. I like it. Environmental stewardship, be protectors of the natural environment through continued township policies, operations, and programs. Three, communication, provide open, interactive.
There's two.
We've got two open. Okay, so provide open and interactive communications with residents and.
I think the word that's, I think it was supposed to be provide open, interactive, and honest.
Well, I think we took out the.
Or did we take it out? Okay.
I think it's supposed to be useful. I think I intended to add the word useful because of the discussion, because people were asking us to find a concept that meant that people got the information they needed in a timely fashion.
That's right.
So I intended to add the word useful, so provide open, interactive, and useful communication with residents and collaborative organizations.
I like that.
So we want to change that to useful. Sam, did you make a note of that? Yeah. And then, community enrichment, provide opportunities and programs to increase residents' quality of life.
Do we want to increase or improve?
Well, let me ask you this, do they mean different things to you?
Or support? I support too.
Okay, so we'll revisit community enrichment. But the other three we're good with? Okay. And then, next question, I, in the interest of time, you know, you guys may not know this, but actually, three hours is really brief for a strategic planning session. So I made a decision not to have an exercise on values for the public session. These are the value statements from the prior strategic plan. There's no statement, there's just single words. I can't even remember how we came up with these values in the session that we did four years ago. But the question for you guys is, do we want to, we have different options for this. We could leave values out of the strategic plan. We could suck these up as written without any kind of statement. I could, we could say we like these, but I, and I could write a statement that, that you guys can give thumbs up or thumbs down to, or we could do a whole exercise on values, which would probably be, you know, at least a half hour session to, to come up with our values.
I wonder if there's not a way, Karen, that we reflect as we're looking at the vision statement, as we're revisiting that, if there's a way to reflect some of those words in the values and clean up the, you know what I mean, do a little?
In the vision statement, you mean?
Yeah, if, if the conversation is around all of the, you know, all of the words in the vision statement. If there aren't some of those that fall into values that we, that we then can, can just update that for the vision statement slightly, and then include those in the value statements.
I like that idea. So, so we could take up, when we take up the vision statement discussion, we could, could almost do like a combined discussion of the value statement and the vision, and the vision statement.
And maybe we, I mean, we decide that it's, that it's in both, but yeah.
Well, we, we may, the main part of the time this morning I wanted to spend looking at those action steps and getting a sense from you guys of whether we want to include all those action steps or add anything else, or, or how we want to handle that. If that goes faster than planned, and we have time before 9:30, we could re, we could come back to this. But I really do like that idea of taking up some of those words from the vision statement and making them our value statements.
Yeah, because this seems to be missing a few, like at least one that I can think of.
Yeah.
I don't like, I have to say, I don't like just having a list here. I'm used to seeing a word with a sentence that says what we mean by it.
I think that's, that's, yeah, I think that's necessary.
Yeah, so I, I, you know, I, I looked at this and was, this kind of leaves me cold.
Well, I agree with Laura. I think we're missing a few. So I think revisiting it is good.
Yeah, I think these words in the, I'm going to read again, just before we go on to the action steps. I'm going to read all these words from the value statements, which I, I mean, from the vision statement, which I think might be more what we want. But it's fiscally responsible, environmentally responsible, diverse, collaborative, safe, welcoming, resilient, peaceful, caring, and engaged. Were all the words from our vision statement. I think those may be getting a little bit more at the ethos that we're trying to create here, so. Great idea, Lonnie. Okay, so then the action steps, which, starting on page five, is a spreadsheet that lists out all the action steps that were proposed either in the survey or at the meeting. And I think the last strategic planning session, we went through a process where everybody just brainstormed and stuck things up on the wall. And then everything that was, was suggested made it into the final plan, and I heard a lot of complaints then that we didn't go through a more thoughtful approval process for the action steps. So I wanted to be sure to give this board an opportunity to think about these action steps and whether these are things that we really want to do. And if we do want to do them, how high priority are they? And when do we want to start them? Because we'll want it, we'll want to take the action steps and spread them out over the three-year period, and thread that, spread them out also over individual people. So I thought we might just start at the top with communications and read through the list, and then hear from all of you if everything on that list sounds like something we actually want to do. Is there anything missing? Is there anything that we want to cross off the list? Do you want me to read them out loud, or can we just take a minute? I'm kind of losing my voice, so. Let's just read them to ourselves, and then, and then, then let me hear from all of you what you think about these. Any thoughts? You know, Sam, this isn't the one that I sent you. This is the one that, this doesn't include the survey ones.
That's everything that was discussed actively during the session with the, with the dots.
I updated this and added all the ones from the survey and grouped them more, grouped them a little bit differently. So.
Let me go grab that.
Yeah, let's go, let's go grab that. That would be great.
Not to say that these aren't all important, but I noted, put a little mark next to the ones that were a five and up, so like five, six, and seven. Because those seem like priorities. It's not to say that these aren't all really important.
Which were your top priorities?
So, so I, you know, on the important column, if it had a five, a six, or a seven, I kind of just put a little mark next to it. So like, enable residents to participate in board meetings via Zoom. That, that had gotten five. Was it blue stickers? Then create a welcome packet for new residents, I guess, six. And then, keep having community conversations, was five. So I felt like those are the three top priorities in communication. Based on, based on the responses. Would you think that?
I'm not sure, because because when I was walking, so, so those do sound like top priorities, so that may be a good way to do it.
Yeah, they receive the most.
Yeah, I get, I, but, but whether we want to make them top priority is another question, because what I, what I observed when I was walking around the room was that the participant, so there's a couple of things. One is the people that came are not necessarily representative of the township as a whole. And number two, I wasn't sure that people were really being methodical about how they went around and, and stuck the dots on. So what I observed is that people were kind of taken with new ideas and would kind of gather and be chit-chatting about those new ideas. Yeah, but, but they weren't necessarily going around the room and being thorough about reading everything and, and sticking a dot on. So I don't know how much we want to, I mean, we could, we could, we could do a follow-up search. I mean, it's kind of up to us as a policy matter if we want to take that. We could take it as another, but, but I don't know if we, if we need to, yeah. Okay, so I, I, oh, Sam, the.
That's what was even to be.
But the survey isn't showing up as a.
That's, that was everything in the spreadsheet that I got.
So I sent the wrong spreadsheet, so I did a lot of work. So there, there wasn't a column that said survey? That's frustrating.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can still talk through, we can talk through these, and then if there are extra, we can.
Yeah, because what's missing is.
Yeah, I think that's okay. I did something similar to what Alicia was saying, except I included the somewhat important column as well. So anyone who had marked it as important or somewhat important, I marked those on the side. So that also would include in this first section, modernize and expand Dexter Township website. And I think that was it.
What about making the complaint? Submission, because.
So it was four somewhat important and three not important. I actually think that that's one that we should discuss in general around policy. I think there is a, the way that I kind of look at that issue is there is a a specific line between making sure that residents feel comfortable making those submissions, which I think is our goal, right? We, we don't want anyone to feel like they can't make a complaint or send in that information, which we've heard recently may have been an issue. But I don't want to go too far into like, where we open up a system where we're getting a bunch of frivolous, like I see some of the frivolous complaints that Fletcher already deals with, that I don't want to make that a daily occurrence. So somewhere in between there, I think is personally where I would like to land.
We, we had some, I, I mean, my belief from having been here every day for a year and a half is, is that good neighborly relationships come from speaking with each other, and using the township as an intermediary can sometimes interfere with that. And I don't know if this is showing up on this, but there were some suggestions, and, and we, we had talked last term also about undertaking some activities to help people get along better or know each other better, neighbors. And I had that same thought, that a tip line might actually almost make, yeah, cause people not to get along.
I mean, I think we've, we've made a step in the right direction with Alicia's policy around, you know, that was, that she suggested around not publicizing when those, like, I think there are small tweaks like that that we can still make.
Or clarify that people can come in in person.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it's more about educating people about the process and how to do it anonymously if they want, you know what I mean, with, without creating a whole new system that makes it easier, I think is the word that I'm.
I think one of the tweaks might be that if there is conflict, regardless of how it's, you know, gets resolved in terms of like policy, that we have, that neighbors can have the opportunity to come in here and talk with each other with, in a facilitated conversation. That, that's an option, rather than just leave it to your, you know, because just rather than just leave it to your, your own devices, I think it's, it's best if neighbors can do that, you know, on their own. However, when there's tension like that, sometimes it's built up. Sometimes there's neighbors that aren't as, aren't as, they don't have the capacities to be as collaborative. It's just, you know, so if, rather than some kind of big, you know, enforcement kind of thing, I'd rather see a, a conversation invited.
I agree with that, and I did look into, there's a nonprofit that can help facilitate or mediate.
Yeah.
And we could, I even talked.
Like a dispute, dispute.
Yeah, I even talked to, it's a called dispute resolution center, and they actually do things specifically to neighbors and helping neighbors get along. You know, Lonnie, I'm looking at you. So we've got five minutes, and I think, I think maybe with this five minutes, this tells me again, this is something else. This is, this is getting into a lot of meaty material that the board probably needs to talk about, and we don't have time.
I mean, we can ta, we can take a little bit of extra time, but I don't know that we would still have enough, so.
Just wonder if we should do another, like, special set, I mean, I hate to ask all of you guys for this, but maybe another strategy, or devote one of our board meetings to strategic planning, because I think between vision, revisiting the one pillar, looking at the values, and then really diving into the action steps, I think we need a, some time.
I think one of the things we can do too, I think this meeting here, especially for short-term rentals and single hauler, will alleviate how much time we'll have to spend at the September meeting on it. So I think in Sep, like at the next meeting, we'll have, we can have this on the agenda, and then again in October. So maybe we just spread out sections over a couple of board meetings, and then plan for passage like by the end of the year. So we could do September, October, if we need it, November. And we'll just keep it as an agenda item.
Yeah, I mean, and so what I can do is get the, the, the complete action step spreadsheet, which is organized a little bit better too. We tried to group all the concepts together. And maybe we can plan on action steps in October, so in September, we can look at the vision, the values, and the pillar language. Maybe the supervisor and staff and I can talk a little bit about the action steps and do a little bit of advanced work on that. And then we can plan to come in October with a more thoughtful discussion of the action steps.
Does that work for everybody? And we'll just plan to space out until final approval, so that we, we have adequate time, but without having another special session. Unless we, unless we really, I mean, if we end up needing it for something else, we could always tack it on to it.
I also like all the ideas that are on here, but I really think that we should, and, and I do put merit to, you know, the choices that everyone made. There were a lot of, our board was there, as well as there were quite a few members of the community. So I would love to emphasize, emphasize on maybe three or four per section, because I know our board can get really excited, and we want to do it all. But if we were to pick three or four per section, then we could really focus on making them great versus just putting a little bit of time into all of them. They're all important, but they can evolve.
Yeah, I like that idea. So anything else for the strategic plan before we, before we move on? All right, we'll move into discussion around single hauler trash. Trustee Nolte? No, that's all right. Sorry to, sorry to catch you mid-gone.
Attached in the thing, Karen was nice enough to go ahead and update the PowerPoint presentation, and really, it updates the Stevens cost for trash and recycle, and it adds answers to questions that Michelle had asked at the previous meeting. I don't know which one.
Can I, just one, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you. I just want to make sure that we mention, especially on the record, the updated Stevens cost. I just want to make sure that we kind of hit on why that's happening. The, the township, when we put out bids, we had an optional meeting for folks who were interested in bidding. And inadvertently, the updated format was not sent to all of the bidders. It was only sent to those who joined that optional meeting. So the Stevens proposal that was submitted was in a different format, and therefore copied differently to the spreadsheet. So these are the updated numbers based on that to make sure that we are getting an accurate cost comparison. So our apologies to the folks at Stevens, and this now reflects their actual bid.
So we're looking at page sixteen. And I have to say that he was very, the guy at Stevens was very good to work with about this. And he was very responsive in resubmitting with the new form. But I did want to point out, and he acknowledged this, that, that the price, that Waste Management is still clearly, that there are two, there are two factors that, that we were looking at in the request for a proposal. One was, does the bidder use WWRA for recycling, and two is price. And Stevens, neither Stevens nor Waste Management uses WWRA, so that doesn't differentiate Stevens from WWRA, and W, doesn't differentiate Waste Management and Stevens. And Waste Management is still a low-cost bidder by a pretty large margin. So, so I didn't feel like it kind of materially affected the vendor selection, but it was good to know that, that this. the vendor selection, but it was good to know that, that the thing that Stevens really wanted to clarify is that they were responsive in providing all of the, all of the requested services. Cause we had an N A next to their name, I think for composting, but they are providing composting.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you either. I just, I wanted to make sure we.
And then those following pages, eighteen, nineteen and twenty are the answers to the questions. Waste Management's answers to the questions that Michelle particularly raised or the board raised at the last meeting. We are not able to tour the new Waste Management facility in Detroit until January because it's not finished. It's, it's under construction.
But they are open to doing a tour.
Not, not, not.
No, once they open.
Yes, once they open.
Once they opened. They're just not open yet. And so it continues right now. I had hoped to have a contract here, but we hadn't gotten it. We haven't gotten the, where did we meet last week or the week before last? And we're waiting for Waste Management to come back with their edits. And I feel like generally we're getting a lot closer and we'd be more than glad to walk through where we are with that now on, on topics. Um, but we don't have a printed version yet to share. So hopefully version six will be coming in the next day or so of where we are with that. And do you just want to ask questions? What do you, how do you want to move through it?
Yeah, I think we should dive into if, um, if folks have questions about any of the new items that are in here or the responses to the questions that we had before. And then I think we'll have you walk through the, the contract and where we're at and, and then we can dive into questions or discussion about that. So any, um, any questions about the new information or the responses?
I do. What exactly is meant by fiber and non-fiber?
Fiber is basically paper.
Okay.
Paper and cardboard.
Non-fiber.
Not material, not fibers. Okay.
Non-fiber is plastic and glass.
Okay.
Other questions or?
So they ship things overseas? Yeah.
It's possible.
I would say though, that the, they ship fiber overseas, so they ship paper overseas, but I don't, but they don't ship plastic and glass overseas. And plastic and glass are the materials that are problematic when they are shipped overseas.
So the bins out here are with Waste Management. So.
No, no. Oh, sorry, with WWRA.
Okay.
It's a totally separate subject.
Okay, great.
One, we're going to have to address, but.
But do we, but so in terms of how they, how they handle that, do, do do WRA, do they send any of that overseas?
No.
Okay.
That's also, I, I agree with, no, they don't send overseas, but we also don't, we can't. I don't think we have the statist, well, first off, I think it's kind of, it's semi meaningless because WWRA didn't bid on our recycle portion of our bid, but we don't know the percentages of recycled material that goes into landfills outside of what's supposed to by each organization. Do you know what I mean? Like.
Oh, so it could go over, the landfill could send it overseas.
Well, just go to the landfill.
Or to the.
It can just fill our landfill and not be properly recycled too. I mean, we don't have percentages on that to. I think it's just a little bit misleading to say, no, WWRA doesn't send overseas. But we don't know what percentage goes to landfill of both organizations.
Well, overall, I believe about ten percent of, of plastic gets recycled and ninety percent of it. I mean, this is just overall industry wide in the United States.
Right.
And that's because of people putting things in the recycling that aren't really recyclable or putting dirty things in the recycling or whatever. Contaminating the, the, and, and then a lot of plastic just isn't recyclable.
Right.
And there's an environmental cost to recycling that isn't necessarily lesser than the, the environmental costs of producing plastic materials. So recycling is itself so extremely problematic that it's, it's just extremely problematic.
Yeah.
So.
And I do, I do believe if we choose to go single hauler route, we are going to have a, a major educational component that we're going to have to be an uptick to educate residents of what is recyclable, what's not. Um, because it's a lot different than just kind of dumping it in our bins back here or sending it to WWRA and letting them, you know, we want, I guess, I guess our, as Karen and I were walking through the contract and coming up with some of the terms, we want to encourage clean recycling. I mean, that is one of our goals is to improve our recycling, uh, for the township. To stay more environmentally, aligns with our overall goals. Any other questions you want to walk through? You just want to start walking through?
Questions before we.
No, I just have opinions.
That's fine.
Well, that's fair.
That's what, that's what this is for.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, WWRA absolutely needs work. Sure. Um, every single individual that's hauling trash needs work. But, but the way I look at it is I'm familiar with the transfer station at, um, in Whitmore Lake. I've witnessed it. I've observed it. I was just there the other day dropping off a deck um, to their construction location. And I'm, I'm still seeing things I don't like seeing. I, I don't like seeing commingled garbage in recycling. I don't like seeing them driving their machines all over it and trying to sift out what's profitable. When I look at garbage as a profit, take it all to the dump. And that's why I'm, I appreciate being on the WWRA board because I'm able to put in my opinion, put in my two cents, put in my passion of we need to do this correctly if we're going to do it. So when I look at Waste Management, it does concern, it concerns me with, I mean, even the footprint of taking it to Whitmore Lake and then they're taking it, transferring it all the way down to Detroit. I mean, the vehicles, the emission on those vehicles, the tires, y- you, you name it. I just, um, I just don't know. Also, the very, very low ball price that they, they brought to the township. That does concern me and I don't want to be the trustee in five years that when other people that would have serviced our community has now left. And that said company now wants to increase their price. I've done my research online. I've seen this happen in multiple areas. So I mean, these are things that I would like to talk with the board and that's why I appreciate um, Supervisor Scott having a work session. Because these are answers I need to give my, my vote. If that makes sense, instead of being in a board meeting and we're sitting here and a, a decision could be made at any time during a board meeting, that, that concerns me. So you know, I, I look over all this and it all sounds sparkly and wonderful, but I, I am concerned and if, if this would have been brought in twenty twenty-one, when all garbage companies have abandoned, had abandoned us pretty much. That's when we needed a single hauler. Now, we have a lot of our community that are happy with who they have, who like the idea of being able to choose who they want to work with. So I just thoughts that I'd like to actually talk about versus.
So the, the contract as a written or, or the discussion at the last, last time Karen and I met with Waste Management about the renewal fees was that they don't want to be, we asked whether we could assume that if they were renewed in five years, we would stick with the five percent. And they said, no, they want to renegotiate. So the, so in other words, we don't have this written into the contract yet, but we are, but we, we have met resistance from Waste Management committing to sticking with a five percent annual reduction after the first contract period, which is to say that the fear that there may, they may ask for a large price increase at the five-year mark is reasonable given how it's, how the contract is shaping up. Now, I, I am in favor of single hauler basically because of the, of the lots are wearing tear on the roads. But there is some risk with it. And there, there is a risk that, you know, I mean, there's, there's a risk that some of these other local providers will not be in business. If, you know, they are going to lose the, anybody that's providing trash collection in Dexter Township now. If we approve this, they, they are going to have less business because, because we're going to be taking business away from them and giving it to Waste Management. And that's just a fact and that's a policy decision. I mean, we just have to decide whether we want to make it. I would say however, that I don't think that we, I mean, these large providers are going up and buying up the small guys. So it's, we're not necessarily protecting the, you know, I don't know what the outcome will be if we say no to it. So.
Um, can I ask, uh, has, do we know like, for example, where Stevens recycling materials, how they distribute?
They, they take, it goes to the city of Ann Arbor. They take it to the Ann Arbor facility over by, you know, over.
Okay. And then the Ann Arbor facility, then we don't know what that, where, where things go from there.
Right.
So we don't really have these a, the answers to these questions that we asked Waste Management.
We do have, you have the answers of what Waste Management will give it. We can't, A, we can't control where companies dispose of their recycling.
No, but we can choose maybe possibly, that could be a, a factor in our.
Well, it was in the RFP. We, we, our first desire was to have the recycled material go to WWRA.
Are there any of the bidders that go to WWRA?
I don't know. I don't think anybody committed to going to.
And we can't, we can't, based on the terms of the RFP, we can't say we like Ann Arbor better than Detroit.
Yeah.
And therefore we're going to go with Stevens because that, we would have to fail this search and redo it with a more nuanced RFP. Um, so we can't, we can't use, we can't introduce new criteria at this point without a risk of lawsuit from the current bidders because they, they couldn't.
They bid to the RFP.
Yeah. I mean, they could reasonably say, oh, well, if we had known you favored Ann Arbor, we could have taken our stuff to Ann Arbor. You know, so we, we have to, we have to be clear when we issue the RFP, the criteria that we're going to use to select them. If we want, if we've learned, and we have learned a lot and, and in this, in this process, so municipalities do fail bids and then reissue them based on the new information they've gotten from public feedback or from their own learning. But we can't choose Stevens because they go to Ann Arbor and be like Ann Arbor better than Detroit because that wasn't in the, in the, we can't do that, but we can fail the bid and then recreate an RFP that, that uses that as a criteria.
And, and to talk about the price increase issue. If we can lock in and we are seriously trying to lock to the five percent, I mean.
Well, that's not a problem. That.
Yeah, we're working on that.
Contract is lock is that's a, is a five percent annual.
And should something happen outside of Waste Management control or township control, you know, gas prices skyrocket. If the state of Michigan increases their tipping fees, which is in discussion. There is a, there is a methodology for Waste Management to come back to this board to ask for a price increase and the board would have to approve it. And if the board does not approve it, it really gives what a thirty or sixty day opt-out in the contract.
Sixty days.
Yeah. I mean.
No, the, the, the draft of the contract as currently written allows them to pass through government mandated
Yeah.
costs, i.e. increases in tipping fees. So they pay, they pay a certain amount. Tipping fees are an amount that are, that is, that is paid by the, by Waste Management companies to dump the trash, basically. And the state of Michigan is currently considering increasing the tipping fee
Yeah.
pretty substantially, like times five or some.
Oh, it's thirty-seven cents and they're opting to go to two dollars.
But.
It's been discussion for years.
But the, but, so the way the contract is, is written right now, the draft contract provides that those can be passed through without approval of the board with, with notice to the board, but not approval of the board. Any other cost increases beyond the five percent a year that Waste Management wants to put forward are subject to approval of the board. So the first draft of the contract provided that they could, with increases in fuel, with increases in labor costs, with increasing, you know, they had a long list of reasons why they could increase their fees without, uh, with notice to the board, but without approval of the board. And we negotiated to change all that such that any, any what they're calling extraordinary increase would be subject to approval of the board except for these paths, pass-throughs, these mandated government fees. So as the contract as written right now, any, any increases beyond the five percent a year have to be approved by this board with the exception of tipping fees. The government mandated.
Government mandated rules. And, and then, you know, at the end of five years, as a previous business owner, I absolutely would want to reevaluate where, we don't know where the economy is going to be in five years. Is it, is it justifiable to say Waste Management, you have to stay within the five percent at the five years? I don't think it is. I, we don't know what's happening. And if right now, if you look at the bid in five years, the monthly just trash rate is just over thirteen dollars, which is under forty dollars per quarter. The amount of money that is saved by the resident per quarter, if they took a fifteen percent increase and that, that's just a number I'm grabbing out of the air. It is still substantial savings to all our residents for the five-year period and even to where we are today. We would, we would not surpass what the current rates that our residents are paying.
I, I would also, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Um, I would also say about the five-year, I mean, I think no matter which company we would use, I doubt that we would get a longer than a five-year term. But also i- in some ways, the township will have a little bit more leverage at that point as well, because we will know exactly how many people have opted into a single hauler service. Right now, we have an estimate of how many we think will opt into a single hauler service. Um, and we'll be able to provide more details in, in an RFP. I mean, I, I guess my point being that if we did it, and I, I know there's still a lot of questions. I don't want it to sound like, you know, foregone conclusion. But if we did move forward, um, in five years, it wouldn't just be, oh, we're locked into whatever Waste Management's new fees are. That would be the start of a new RFP process and other companies could also then bid. So it would still need to be competitive, I guess, is my, is my point. Michelle, I know you're.
Okay. So just a few things. Um, how, and I believe you know this ratio. How many residents currently are with W?
Around thirty percent, between thirty and thirty-five percent.
So between thirty and thirty-five percent. Okay. So, and they're anticipating a hopeful of possibly sixty to seventy percent of people were to opt in?
Uh, by our survey.
They're hoping eighty-five.
Hoping eighty-five.
We'll see. All right. So predominantly they control the area. I mean, they probably are the top.
They're one of the largest. Yeah. I don't know. We don't know every customer, every trash company's usage right now of township residents.
But I would, I.
I would say they're a leader.
I think that they're probably the largest.
Yeah. Hauler. Which, you know, brings me to another. Which, you know, brings me to another point. First, the price will increase. That's just inevitable, because this is too lowball of a quote. You don't come in and cutthroat like this. Number, I mean, and that concerns me, period, but you know, I've, I have done my due diligence, I've reached out, I, I see a lot of the community, so this has been a big conversation. People are paying all over the board, the waste management, I mean, and it's.
It's really kind of crazy, yeah.
And, and you know, if you value your, your clients, you'd want to be in some sort of a, a normal ballpark. So that right there doesn't give me great confidence. Second, shuttering small businesses. Third, garbage and recycling commingling. And I, and I do want to just state, I, 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 he asked me, um, a gentleman called from, uh, actually, I've gotten quite a few phone calls from residents, but one that stood out, and the reason I'm bringing this one up is because it was, um, a gentleman that lives in Carriage Hills, a road that that community spent a lot of their own dollars to have rebuilt. So this gentleman called a week ago-ish, and he said, look, I understand the idea of a single hauler, and we've spent a lot of money on our roads. But he wanted me to know that waste management literally went around the block three times in front of his house. And he's like, I can't understand, we're, you know, we're trying to eliminate, you know, alleviate these large trucks driving, especially when they've paid a lot of money over there. And a waste management truck literally went around the block. And I, I, I get it, that that's an interesting development over there. But I mean, drive down the one road, yeah, I don't even know how, how they would, you know, get around, but he was really disappointed that, that truck did not go, need to go by his house three times.
Okay, can, can I, can I say something about?
Another resident just said, um, that yes, they witnessed garbage collection and recycling collection going into the same truck.
Can I, um, address the lowball bid question?
Sure.
So waste management, some, some municipalities including Scioto Township have single hauler ordinances where you can't opt out. So every resident, every resident is mandated, and it's collected through the tax collection process. And when waste management bid on Dexter Township's RFP, they bid, they, they're understand, they made a mistake, basically. They thought that we had mandated, um, single haulers. So they thought that they were going to have 100% of the residents participating. And you guys might even remember this. When we, when we discovered that they had made that mistake, we went back to them and gave them the option of changing their bid. Um, re-increasing their bid, basically, but it, it, in acknowledgement of the fact that not all of the residents are going to participate. And they just, they elected not to do it. Basically, I think we're, we're not a huge customer for them, even, you know. So for whatever reason, but part of the reason they're lowball, they're so low is because they, they made a mistake in their initial bid, and then they decided to honor it. So it is a lowball bid, but it was because they thought they were going to have 100% of the customers.
And that would have been roughly 2,800 homes, and we're shooting for 2,400 homes, roughly.
I'm not concerned about the environmental impact of the trip to Detroit, because, because I'm comparing, because in my mind, it's, it's, it, we're, we're not comparing it to the optimal, which would be going, maybe would be going to WWRA, although I'm not sure WWRA can handle all of it. But, but it's comparing it to the status quo. And I think the environmental impact of the status quo is pretty high with all those trucks driving around and going to the various places that they're going. Very uncontrolled where the waste is going. Um, so we're, we're talking about moving from a kind of very uncontrolled, diverse situation to a much more controlled situation. And the international shipping, like, as I said, I just want to emphasize again, I, if they're not shipping plastics and glass overseas, I'm comfortable with them shipping plastics and get, and glass to the NAFTA region, which is what they do. And, and if necessary, fiber overseas. Again, I think it's, that's all far better than the status quo, which is, which we don't know, you know, I mean, there's.
We know nothing right now. We, we have eight companies servicing the township, but we have no stats, really. Or no control over where it's going or what's happening with it. And the pricing issue is a pricing issue that waste management chose to hang with. That is their,
we're a loss leader or whatever, but these are, these are all, I, 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 I think we're getting at these core policy matters, and people just have to decide what they, what they want to do. I, I mean, I feel like these are known, we know, we know, and we just have to decide, there's advantages to going to single hauler, and there's disadvantages. And we just have to decide.
There's no perfect solution.
There's no perfect solution.
Trash is not a.
There's no perfect solution, but to Karen Nolte's point, I mean, our trustee Nolte, sorry,'s point. You know, I was present for the, the town halls, which were fantastic. And I mean, the majority of people that were very excited about single hauler came down to the price.
I think it's fearful.
So when you see this, and this is not going to hold weight in five years, I don't even think it will for three years. And this is a huge company we're talking about. I, I just don't want to be that, this board that you can't go against waste management if you're not happy with, you know, it's, it's very concerning to me, because this is not transparent at all. And the majority of people are really excited that the township has worked so hard and brought in a company that, and you're showing these figures, and even I was like, whoa, you know, that's a huge saving.
But we can't choose, it, it, we, we can't, we can't choose the second lowest bidder because we think the first lowest bidder is too cheap. That's, we would, again, then we're choosing between failing the bid and rebidding or, or approving the bids as, as, as stated.
Well, but I mean, even now, you know, I, I had no idea that they were bidding, you know, believing they were giving the whole community, that this was going to be mandated through Dexter Township, we were going to take care of it, they were going to service the whole community, period. Meaning, the community is going to pay for it in their taxes if they want it or not.
We never said that.
But, no, but if that's the prices that they brought forth, you know, on that condition of what they thought.
They were given the opport, but they were given the opportunity to withdraw. Or.
That's their business model, that, we can't control.
I'm just saying, they should have, because now we are just, it just, it just all feels uncomfortable to me.
Trustee Abbott.
Okay.
Well, I don't think there's anything that's not transparent here. I think they've explained why their bid is a lowball bid. And that makes perfect sense. They did think that we were going to run it through the township. But the price going up, you think it's going to go up in three years. There's things in the contract that are written that the only way they would go up is if gas prices went enormous, or the state of Michigan increases their tipping fees. And that's a significant thing with the state of Michigan. If it's 37 cents a tip, and now they want to raise it to $2 a tip, that is going to significantly impact. But that's not controlled by waste management, they have to pass that cost on to the consumer. That's just business. There's nothing non-transparent about that.
A fuel price increase, they would have to come and demonstrate it to us, and then we would have to approve it. Only the tipping fees are, are an automatic pass.
Okay. The other thing is, I don't think that we're not in the trash business. And every company has their own goals. They have their own motivation of why they do certain things. And is it up to us to totally question waste management's goals? And Sam went back that way. Are they using Dexter Township as, and I'll say this, I don't like saying this, as a loss leader to access other communities? When we started the RFP, there was talk of other communities joining with us, but we were ready to move faster than they were. So, that's Sam.
I know, I'm asking if she needs help bringing a table out for mega.
So, we don't know what their ultimate goals of getting Dexter Township's business is. And, you know, there's a, I know there's a few surrounding communities that are watching us, and if we do, does waste management win on that level? That's, that's their business goal, so it's not our. Yeah, it's their strategies, it's not our strategy, it's not, is it our responsibility to question their, their business strategy?
There's another, I, I, I feel like we, I, I feel like, to me, this is, we've talked about this, but there's another major topic that we haven't talked about, that I think we should talk about before we move on to short-term rentals, which is how to hold them accountable, if we, if we go with them, how do we hold them accountable for their?
If there's commingling, if there's
Yeah.
trash in the neighborhoods or their.
And then, and then how do we assist with dispute resolution?
So I want to make sure, though, that, that everyone is good before we, because I would also like to walk through the contract pieces. Because I know that that's going to be a big question as well. And we do still have, I mean, we've, we still have, um, a little bit of time, so. Any other comments, concerns?
The only thing my question is, is, this is the first I'm hearing. I, I just want to bring, just clarify this, this is the first I personally am hearing. And tell me if it's true, or maybe I'm just didn't understand it before. Um, the totals that they have quoted for Dexter Township, I was not aware that they had the opportunity to come and rebid. I was not aware that these figures were, that they were going to service the Dexter Township's entirety.
I, I think we did bring that up.
Bring that up before?
Three, uh, two or three times at prior meetings, we've brought up that, that, that waste management made an initial error, and then we went back to them, explained the error, gave them an opportunity to amend their bid, and they elected not to do it. And we brought it up because it's basically.
What happened.
It's what happened, and it's, and it's explanatory for why their prices are.
I attended every one of those meetings, and yes, that was brought.
I, I also think, I mean, I mean.
Just wanted that clarity.
Yeah, I, I think too, Michelle, the, the, um, I, I don't, I don't personally have an issue with that, like, they, they stated that amount. I mean, if we look at, I, I think part of it is just the proportion and size of the township, right? If we were a larger township, and they were only getting 85% of the residents versus 100%, that's, you know, potentially thousands of homes. Here, a- as we said, it's, you know, it's a couple hundred, which I think in, my guess is, and again, I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm, I don't work with waste management, but that, that the, when they calculate that out, that the difference would probably be minimal. Um, and that, you know, I, I think the intent here is to get the business. I mean, I, I think, you know, to the point of holding them accountable, and I, I think the real decision that we have to make is, are we doing single hauler, are we not doing single hauler? I, I don't, because we, none of the providers that bid hit the primary goal of sending all of their stuff to WWRA. So, you know, we, we are looking at all of them do hit some of our, like, our environmental goals, our goals around roads, providing service to the township. So I think that, you know, that's really where we're at, is, is whether or not policy-wise, we want to implement based on whether we feel like that's, you know, the pros of, of hitting those goals outweigh the potential for, in five years, them either raising prices, or there not being another company to service the township, um, which I think is the hard part, because that's the, the real unknown.
We don't know that. I, I did have the thought that, that if waste, if WWRA was interested in this, we could go with waste management now, and WWRA could have as their goal to be ready to be the single hauler for Dexter Township in five years. And then, and then it would be a government function executed by a government entity. WWRA would have to be interested in it, and they didn't display any interest in bidding.
They did not bid, they chose not to bid.
So, but we could position ourselves to have an, uh, uh, not, we, we could, we could set it as a goal that our own provider would be ready to do this service for us in five years.
All right, so let's walk through the contract.
Okay.
And especially any of the terms that we're uh, working on, so that everyone's aware, since we don't have a, a final copy in front of us, so that we know what we're looking for when.
The general gist of what, uh, has been negotiated on changes and basically, uh, residents would have three service levels to opt for, which would be trash, recycle, and yard. The yard waste would also encompass food waste, which is a major county goal. And since we're also supported by a county grant, that we want to help make the county's goals is to reduce food waste going into landfills because of all the methane gas. So that would go in with yard waste from April to December. And to help with that. Um, residents would, in the first opening, they'd be given two, or carts, should you choose trash and recycling, you'd be given two carts at no charge. Um, during the first, I can't remember if it's 30 or 60 days, if a resident wants a different-sized cart, they would, we would have a certain time period where a resident can call and switch out the size of their carts. And then if they want to change after that, there would be an additional charge to doing so.
And included in the service, in the trash collection service, would be one bulk item?
Yeah.
Per month?
The first week of the month.
And then there's, you would have to notify them that you intended to have that collected. And then additional items would cost something, you know, $25 each.
I think we said their standard going is $25 for additional bulk items, pre-scheduled.
And then you could, there's a vacation, they don't call it a snowbird clause, but it's, there's a vacation clause where you can suspend service for up to nine months at no charge.
From 30 days to nine months, no restarting fees. Which is better than what was before, because it did have restart fees in, in three months. So it's from 30 days to nine months, you can stop your service and restart with no restart fees.
And then there would be two Christmas tree pickups per year.
First two weeks of January, they would do Christmas tree pickups to help get rid of all our Christmas trees.
We, we asked for, so if you, and then if you want a second bin, you know, if you want two bins instead of one. I, I mean, this is, this is, I asked, they were proposing a relatively modest cost for a second bin. But I asked them to increase, so this is a policy decision that I made, kind of on behalf of the board, and we can revisit with them if you want. But I said, I'd rather see a higher fee for the second bin, because I don't like the idea of people, of single residences requiring two of those giant trash bins. I think, I think people should be conscious of minimizing their waste as a family. Um, so I said, let's, let's not make this the fee for the second bin so small, let's make it.
For example, the, um, the first bin would cost a residence 10.75 per month. If you wanted two trash bins at your home, the second bin would be 9.95 a month.
And, and they were originally saying, you know, $5 a month or something. I said, let's make it a little bit higher, so we can incentivize people to, to reduce their waste.
Right. Um, residents would be set up on auto pay. There would be a surcharge if you go to a credit card, if you link your account to a credit card. Um, there's an additional, it's a $2 per quarter, I think it was, charge.
And they had a, the original contract had provided that non-payment would be collected through the assessment process.
Yeah.
Um, as a lien on your taxes. And we agree, we, I believe that, well, I don't really know why that was, but they, but their normal process is just to go through a collections agency, just a normal, you know. So we asked if, if we could just go to that, and they said, yes.
We don't really want the town.
So we're not going to have, because I checked in with, with Chris and Sam, and they were like, yeah, we're not used to doing that, and that would be an administrative burden for us, and said, okay. Then we went back to them, and they said, yeah, we can just use a collection, we can just go to a collection agent. We can just go through a normal delinquent collections process.
Right.
And if you're delinquent, there's terms in the contract for if you're delinquent for a certain amount of time. I don't know if it's three months or something, then they, they, they stop collecting.
Yeah.
From your home until you, until you're caught up.
So the township would not be involved in collecting past due fees for residents. That would be on Waste Management. Then there's a chart of liquidated damages that we've worked out. We would need a process to, to process liquidated damages if the township wishes to go-
Explain what liquidated damage.
So liquidated damage, and I'll just read them. So failure to clean up solid waste litter.
Oh, oh, let's, let's go big picture first. Liquidated damages are where you, where you put a price on their failure to comply with the term of the contract. So, so for example, Michelle mentioned co-mingling of trash and recycling. We have a provision in the contract that if they, if they're seen doing that, or if they do that, they have to pay. And that payment, that penalty fee is known as a liquid, that's called a liquidated damage.
And that's $500 per co-mingling incident.
So we have about 10 or 15, we have a list of about 10 or 15-
There's eight.
Eight, okay, so, so eight, eight, eight liquidated damages where if they don't comply with the terms of the contract, then they pay a fine. And that fine comes to the township. But we're working with them now. We've asked Sarah, by way of Lonnie, to, to come to us with a method. What is not specified in the contract right now and under negotiation is how do we actually determine and, and hold them accountable to those liquidated damages? So the liquidated damages are in there, but we don't, we have not yet figured out the process by which we determine that, that, that an infraction has happened, and then we execute the charge. So we're working on that.
So there are eight liquidated damage categories. God, I just had something else on my mind and it went right out.
Well, the other is dispute resolution. So if, if, on the other, the reverse is, they want to assess damages, or they want to have some way of holding their customers accountable to their rules. So they don't want to see trash thrown in the recycling bin.
Overfilled cans is a big issue for them.
Yes, and so on. And so they, they, there are, they, we are talking about what the penalties are for-
For residents co-mingling.
Right.
If a resident co-mingles in the recycling the first time, it's a, a note on the top of the can, a sticker that you're co-mingling. The second time, I think there's a second warning, the third time, there would be a fine, where they would stop picking up their recycling, like, and that's where we have a heavy education burden to go. But it's the same way, we don't want them to co-mingle, they don't want our residents to co-mingle.
And they do have cameras apparently on their-
Cameras in their trucks.
So that's, so that's video evidence. And, and it's video evidence that exists for both sides of the equation. Their failure to comply and, and resident, you know, customers' failure to comply. So, so we're, we'll be using that video evidence somehow in this process, that this undecided process.
Right.
Laura?
So if you have a resident that doesn't care very much about recycling and they just get trash, can they throw all their recycling into their trash?
Yes.
You don't get a fine for putting recycling in trash, even if you, even if you have recycling, if you throw your cardboard boxes in the trash, that's not an infraction. It's if you put your garbage in the recycling, that's where so many problems happen with recycling. So you, you really are discouraged from putting anything that is trash in the recycling. And people do something called wishcycling, which is, they hope, they, they, they hope it'll be recycled. They put a plastic container in that's dirty or something, and then that, that contaminates the whole thing.
Right.
And then all that stuff has to go to the trash and that you have to pay.
To the landfill. And the other thing that we have worked out for our HOAs, we have some HOAs that have already made their own little mini single hauler entities, that they have one hauler, the HOA collects from their residents, and the HOA pays the, the trash company. Waste Management is willing to honor those relationships and just maintain one account for the HOA, and then the HOA operates. We also have an HOA that is divided between two municipalities right now, and they will honor that entire HOA, even though part of it is outside of Dexter Township. Simply because the HOA is the main customer, but they will go pick up everybody.
But under this plan, the HOA cannot choose a different-
Correct. The HOA would have to go with Waste Management if we chose to go with single hauler. And I will say, three out of the six HOAs that I've been in touch with so far are Waste Managements.
Any, any other highlights from the contract?
I think that's about where we are now, isn't it? I mean, there's a lot of, we have, we have open issues, obviously. We have dispute resolution, we have implementation, we have education. We have, I went back and asked them for a commercial option for our businesses, if they could give us. And for Dexter Township, do we want to stay with one little cart, or do we want one of those little bins? So we asked for some commercial, just to see if they would be willing to handle some of our commercial accounts, so we don't ignore them.
Karen, the big, the big topic, well, there's, there's a couple of things that I want to bring up. One is the bin collection.
Yeah.
Where the old bin collection, we're working on that. One idea that we gave to them is, could we just have our bulk item, the first bulk item, and it be, be old bins?
Old bins, if the other companies don't want to come and get them.
Yeah, and they're looking at that. They're also going to be reaching out to WWRA to see if they want the old bins. So we're trying to figure out how to do the bin collection, which has been for the, for the other providers, which has been a problem for us.
Can they just be kept?
Or, or they can be kept, I mean, that-
But we got to figure, there's probably 1,200 to 1,500 bins out there. If, should we choose to do this, there's going to be a lot of bins. We know what we were with when JFL fired us and with Trash Star firing us. So we know we'll, we, and it could very well turn into a cost for Dexter Township that we're looking at examining. Waste Management does not choose to pay to pick up all the-
Yeah, so we, we, if, if we think that the most efficient method is just to hire a contractor to come and haul away the bins, then we would be coming to the, if, if we decide to go with single hauler, we'd be coming to the board and asking for a, a budget appropriation to pay. But that's the worst case, is we ask for a budget appropriation to pay for bin removal, assuming that some of the current providers would not pick up their bins, because we don't have any way to force them to come pick up their bins.
Right. But it was in the RFP, if you chose to bid on the RFP and you did not win, you are responsible for coming and picking up your bins. But from our past experiences, that doesn't happen.
The other, the other thing that we dropped for now is trying to sweep in-
Oh, McKinley and-
For McKinley and here on River Drive, which are, are heavy-use roads, where the other side of the street is a different municipality. Initially, we wanted those people on the, on the other side of the street, at least to be offered the, the favorable pricing in hopes that it would reduce the number of haulers on those major-use roads. But that turns out to be very complicated. And so we decided, we still want to do it, but we, but we, we want to get through our own contract with them first, and then we, we can take up that matter of, of the split roads. The other thing to mention is that it's, that the contract, the draft of the contract, the process that it went through was, first, it was reviewed by the Single Hauler Committee, which included Theo and Matt Nod, who are kind of our single hauler experts on that committee. Matt Nod is a consultant who's been here to speak to us, and he's done these in multiple municipalities. Then it went to the county attorney, who has reviewed single hauler contracts for various municipalities. We made those changes. Then it went to our attorney, you know, Sarah gave us, and experts at Bodman. And now it's with Waste Management with, so our version of the contract is with Waste Management, and it's residing with their attorneys now to, to, to come. But it has gone through a preliminary review of their attorneys. And I, I don't think they're, they're not telling us that there are any big issues that they're, that they're concerned about. Our, the, the thing I was worried about was the fee change, you know, that we had taken away there.
Their right to automatically raise fees.
But they're fine with that, so that's the status.
That's where we're sitting. We're waiting for their legal review to come back to us. And once we get that, and if it encompasses our initial verbal ask, then we would share it with the board. We are hoping for that to have happened by today, but we have not received it back from Waste Management yet.
Questions about the contract?
If everybody would like that, the next version of the contract, we're probably far enough down, that we're close enough that we could share that next version, and everybody become, start becoming familiar with it. Then we can talk highlight changes rather than total contract changes.
Clean it up. Take out all my comments.
I like that you were able to get the snowbird pause extended. That was very, we had a resident who wanted that done. He didn't think three months was enough. So nine months is a big coup.
They offered that. I mean, we didn't even ask for it.
I was going for three months and six months. I wanted to be-
They, they, I do think they're eager for business, because they're-
That's great.
The only other that, I, I think I disagree with, with asking them to raise the price on a second cart. That's the only-
That's why I told you that, I, you know, I mean, that, because I'm an environmentalist, and that's always my priority, you know. But I did that. I don't even think Karen was at the meeting. I think she would have kicked me under the table.
I might have been out with my knee.
It's a good thing she has a new knee. Now she can kick you under the table. Now it's, I, that, that piece, I also, it, it struck me as we were talking about this in a way that, that it hadn't before, that this, in a lot of ways, we've actually been able to build in protections for our residents that they wouldn't have otherwise had with, with all of these other companies, specifically around the things like co-mingling and the liquidated damages. I know there's still a lot of work to do there, but it seems like that is some teeth that currently we would have no, residents would have no control over any of that. And the, the flip side of that is that the fines or collections, or those are all things that you agree to already. So if, you know, if I'm a Waste Management customer currently, that's no different than what I would already be exposed to if I were co-mingling on my end, or, you know, putting too much in my bin, those kinds of things. So I, I appreciate the work going back and forth on the contract, because it sounds like we've been able to get some pretty favorable terms for the residents if we decide to move forward. So really am thankful that, that all of the thought and process has gone into it. I hope that we're able to get a dispute resolution and, and sort of the, those pieces that are outstanding worked in as well.
I have a question. Are we still shooting for the start of signup in October to where we would be starting January?
That's on the list is to reevaluate the timeline.
Okay.
Because we can't, we, we can't go to residents. We don't have our Q and As ready. We have to have a contract in place.
I don't think we're going to be able to approve the contract in September.
I don't either.
Soonest we'll be able to approve. I think we'll have a draft contract. I'm, I mean, I think it's even optimistic to say we'll have a draft contract by September. I mean, we'll have something to share, but, but a draft that, that Waste Management would be ready to sign, we won't have in September. We'll probably have that in October. And then, and then even if we did in October, we would then need to ramp up, you know. So, so that means Christmas trees and all that. You know, we were hoping for January because of the Christmas trees.
And a fresh quarter to start. If we wanted to start on a fresh quarter, it would really be a mark.
Right, right, okay. I do really appreciate all the work you've put into this. As somebody who has not had trash service since JFL got rid of all of us, I have been going to every single hauler meeting. I have been waiting, and I am really excited to sign up.
Yeah, I, I have to say, to say, I mean, on that, I am too, because I haven't had recycling, and I really want recycling. But, but I, this has been a huge amount of work. I think you guys are aware of that. And I just want to emphasize again, we, we must, based on the terms of the RFP, it's either Waste Management, or, or we go back to the drawing board and reissue the RFP. And I just want to say right now, I'm not doing this again. I just, I just don't have it in me. So, so if we decide to fail this bid, then I think, I think somebody else would need to raise their hand to oversee the next RFP, or we just say we're not going with, with single hauler. Because I just don't, it, it's been, it's been, it's been, it's been a lot of work, and I just don't want to do it again. I don't feel optimistic that, that we would have a better outcome from a second, from a next RFP. And so I wouldn't feel like I was going into that with the idea that we're going to get a better, we're going to get better terms, or we're going to get a better vendor. I, I just don't feel optimistic. And so I, I, I want everybody to know that upfront when you're thinking about how you want to proceed on this.
I've learned a lot about trash, and I thought I knew a lot about trash, because my brother-in-law was in the trash business. And, but I've learned a lot about trash, and I do believe Waste Management has the infrastructure to handle us. And, you know, had we waited for, waited the RFP towards a, a local private person, do we have all the controls or some of the things that we have with Waste Management? We don't know. Would we get the snowbird? Would we get the bulk waste? Would we, you know, you, it's all what ifs, what ifs, what ifs, what ifs. But we know where we stand now. I do believe Waste Management can handle Dexter Township. They've been fairly easy to work with. I mean, we're, it's a little slower than we'd all like it to go, but then again, I bailed out for five weeks, so who am I? So I do believe Waste Management can handle Dexter Township. And they also handle, they, they currently handle Dexter. They handle, are they Celine? I knew this. Yes, they are Celine. Mary Ann or Bronya. Yeah. Yeah.
Other, any other questions, comments? I think we're in a decent place. I, I agree that I think the policy decision here is, are we doing single hauler, are we not? And that's, that's where we'll end up at, you know, once we have a final contract. And I, I just want to say, I, I really appreciate, I mean, one of the reasons that we may not be able to start in January if we decide to do this, is because we've been very deliberate. This is a big decision. It impacts every household in the township in, in some way. And so I appreciate both the work that's gone into it, and, you know, frankly, the diversity of opinions on the board that has helped make everything, in my opinion, be better. I think this is, it's been a good process. We've been very, very thoughtful, I think, about getting questions answered and really working through the, the parts of the contract that would need it. So really appreciate everybody, you know, both the Karens for all your work, and everyone on the board for diving in and, and really being a part of the process. Any, any last things on this before we move on to our next topic?
Can we take it?
A small break? Yes. We, we are going to stand at ease for five minutes. We'll reconvene at 10:35. To, again, thank everyone who's worked on short-term rentals, the committee, also the Planning Commission. I think I neglected to, to call them out by name at the last meeting, so making sure that I do that. There's been a lot of work that has gone into short-term rentals, as well as Megan and Fletcher, who we're going to hear from here in just a second. At, at our last meeting, we asked for some information. After that meeting, I also talked with Fletcher and asked for some additional information around sort of the feasibility. And so what you'll see here in the memo really outlines the answers to hopefully all of those questions. So I think we're going to start with Fletcher and Megan, and let them give highlights of the memo here. And then if there are, are questions that, that the board has- And let them, uh, give highlights of the memo here. And then if there are, are questions that, that the board has, we can dive into those.
Good morning, everyone. We put together a memo for the board's consideration, specifically diving into, the existing conditions in the township for short-term rentals, the feasibility behind short-term rentals with the proposed ordinance, and the financial impacts behind those. Just a quick recap, the Planning Commission had a public hearing in July where they forwarded a proposed zoning ordinance to the board, allowing short-term rentals as a permitted use in the agricultural and commercial zoning districts. This differs a little bit from what was proposed to them originally, uh, which was allowing short-term rentals in the ag, rural residential, lakes residential, and recreation, conservation zoning districts. On, uh, page twenty-four of the packet, uh, Carlisle Wartman put together a map detailing where the current agricultural and commercial zoning districts are. This is what the Planning Commission forwarded to the board. Um, these are the parcels that would potentially allow short-term rentals if the board were to, um, adopt that zoning ordinance as recommended. Staff looked at the existing short-term rentals in our community. Looking at Airbnb and VRBO, I was able to identify twelve active short-term rentals in the community. Nine are on Portage Lake and three are on North Lake. Eleven of the twelve are located in the Lakes Residential Zoning District and one is in the rural, rural residential district. Currently, there's no active short-term rentals in the agricultural or commercial zoning districts. I do want to note that there may be additional existing short-term rentals out there that I'm unaware of. There could be, you know, they could be advertised through different means. That's something staff, uh, was unable to identify. I did want to mention that out of all of these active short-term rentals, if the board or if, uh, ordinance forty-five was adopted as currently written, none of the active short-term rentals would be permitted under those standards. Essentially, all of these properties are smaller than the half-acre lot size or the two-acre minimum for rural residential. And ordinance forty-five, uh, was requiring these parcels to meet the dimensional requirements of the zoning district they're located in.
Can I add something?
Yeah, of course.
And that minimum lot size, using the minimum lot size of the underlying zoning district, that was a recommendation of the Planning Commission. That was something they added to ordinance forty-five. That wasn't part of the original recommendation that came from the Short-Term Rental Committee.
But the Short-Term Rental Committee had requirements for distance from neighboring properties and so on, right? That would have kind of approximated that.
They, they had a specific number. They couldn't decide on a specific number of licenses per zoning district. And so they had looked at, uh, range. I'm, I'm thinking it was like one percent to five percent.
Yeah, they were looking at caps and also potentially having distances between properties.
That's what I was asking about, was the distance.
And throughout these conversations, uh, looked like Planning Commission wanted staff to work with the board.
Fletcher, I know from conversation I had with you that you also looked at how many, not just out of the existing operators, but how many?
Properties.
Properties. If, if every property owner applied, how many properties would make it through? And you said it was something like nine or so, you know, it was very small. It's a very small, um, number.
So on, on, on page twenty-seven of packets, Carlisle Wartman put together that detailing real estate properties in the Lakes Residential, you can beat that minimum lot size standard. And there are quite a few, um, parcels that fit that standard, a hundred and fifty-one, uh, to be exact. However, the vast majority of them fall outside of the lake shore properties, where the market demand currently is short-term rentals. So, looking at this, uh, if the board were to consider expanding short-term rentals to lake residential properties, having Planning Commission, if you look at this, I think you would need to look at, uh, allowing ninety-four rate block size, block sizes into the mix. Because that's currently where the market is. All plate book properties that are smaller, uh, than what the zoning ordinance currently calls for.
Great. Are there, um, questions that folks want to dive into or anything else that you all want to add from your memos?
Just real quick on the financial impact, um, of this ordinance. If the board were to adapt what the Planning Commission recommended, enforcement would need to occur on existing short-term rentals. People could willingly comply, however, there's always the chance that people would not end up with incur legal costs. These operatives should comply with what the board's recommending. Additionally, we did reach out to Hamburg Township. They currently have twelve registered short-term rentals with a registration fee of forty dollars. The planning director at Hamburg said that that fee covers their cost for both review and enforcement.
It sounds like it's not feasible.
I'm going, how's that possible? You can't do anything for forty dollars nowadays. Little, that's an hour of time for life.
The major zoning for victory. So I think, uh, the township's fees might be.
So did we look at any, uh, financial impact of enforcing? If, should we choose to go with short-term rental, what would be the enforcement impact on the township? Did we look at those financial numbers at all?
I, I had, I mean, we had rough numbers for, we believe that if we move forward, we would have to hire to, to do the proactive enforcement. And what we had in the budget currently was, um, around ten thousand dollars for a part-time position. Given the, the way that we structured health insurance, that cost could potentially be higher now. So I, I was estimating that it would be between twenty and thirty thousand dollars a year, um, potentially to go to proactive enforcement. That would include the legal costs and, you know, any of the additional enforcement hours if we had to hire a separate person.
And if we put a theoretically, if we put a cap, I know we talked about a one percent cap of residents, that would be nine lake properties, roughly, just ballparking. So you're talking what, three, four thousand dollars a year per property?
Go ahead, Megan.
So if you allow it and you have a license, a lot of the things happen at the time of the license. So they have to turn in an application. They have to turn in proof that they've done things and then they have to have inspections. You could have your fees so that those covered those inspections. And then they should have to reapply every year and get the license again. Um, and then that fee should cover that cost. Then if they are operating outside of those, then that's when you would incur some legal costs or some enforcement costs. But just by having the license, at that point, you're checking to see if somebody's a good actor at the outset. And then you have an annual check. When you're in a situation where you don't have a license and it's not clear, probably your enforcement is going to be more for certain cases where somebody refuses to comply. And when you don't have a clear ordinance about it, then your legal cost may be higher because once you get into court and lawyers talking to one another, they've got some, that, somebody sees daylight, um, where somebody sees and that you couldn't do something. So I would just keep in mind that what your, your fees should always cover whatever those costs are of the inspections. And then, but you can't make money off your fees. So you can up the fee so much so that you're subsidizing something else in the township. Was that helpful?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. And I, I am a proponent that I think zero tax dollars should be used on zero, on, um, should we institute a short-term rental? I don't think tax dollars should be put out for that. So I'm, I'm a proponent that a special fund is established should that happen. So no tax dollars are paid for a person's commercials business, whether it's enforcement or whatever.
What if we expand, what, I mean, these ordinances as proposed are fairly complicated. What if we just expanded the definition of bed and breakfast to include, so that we don't say no altogether, but we allow limited short-term rentals where the owner is present at all times? So, you know.
You're talking in, in exa- auxiliary or other how?
Like the Chuck, like the Chuck Colby example, what he spoke about.
Where they're present.
They're present. It's their house next door.
I agree.
I, I mean, I, I would observe that a lot of the things that the public were talking about are issues that relate to land use. It doesn't have to do with short-term rentals, like the giant houses and the, and the, um, the aesthetic disturbance and all that people were talking about that wouldn't, it's separate from short-term rentals.
I, I disagree with you on that point because that came up in the last meeting that people are buying up the little cottages and then overbuilding to their budget in hopes of doing a short-term rental. So the case that was brought up at our last meeting was there are two, and the owners were here and the neighbors were here, I believe. And there are two that were built that were built with the intention of being a short-term rental to pay for their, for their new builds. And so they built these large homes.
But it was already disallowed, so.
But they're still, we haven't, we haven't taken action on the disallowment. But I'm just telling you, the intention is that people buy small houses and build a larger house with the intent for a short-term rental. Because it helps pay for it. Yeah.
But that's not what Karen is saying, I don't think. But I don't want to speak for you. We're talking about, uh, uh, and I've been talking with people, I've been doing my community research and going around. Yeah, last night I was on a boat with a, a man who has been on the lakes for his entire life. I went over to the neighbor's house with that controversy. And what I'm finding is that people in general are not for these large, uh, short-term rentals. These, these big houses where people are not going to be there. They're just renting them out. It seems like, you know, and it, and they're going far and wide, uh, to find people to come in. So it's, it's problematic. What is less problematic, I think, and where we could find some flexibility is people who have, for example, a room in, uh, like in their, in their garage, okay? Like a, of, an, an outbuilding where there is a room that could be rented out and the person is still there. The, the homeowner is still there on the property, as if it's a bed and breakfast, but it's not necessarily in the same home. It's, but it's on their property. And it seems to me that we could flex in that way. Because the bigger problem, the big problem is unregulated, like owners not being present to be taking care of any parking issues or other, other issues that come up. That looks like to, to be the biggest concern. But it seems to me like we could be somewhat flexible in having, what are they calling it? Accessibility?
Accessory dwelling unit.
Dwelling unit. ADUs, yes. I'm still learning all of my.
What's our, what's our zoning issues on ADUs? Do we allow ADUs on, on?
Do we allow renting them out?
But I thought, like, even when we had pole barns and things like that, that people weren't allowed to put living structures in their pole barns or in their garages. I thought there was rules against that.
So there's certain standards for ADUs. Um, they can only be, I believe, thirty-three percent of the gross floor area of the primary dwelling. Um, and they can't be located across the street. They need to be on the same parcel.
Same parcel, okay.
The master plan, um, specifically mentions ADUs when it comes to short-term rentals. And, um, and is against using those. Um, so I think if we were to consider bed and breakfast, you know, the owner would need to be there, obviously. And it would need to be in the principal structure.
Gotcha. Not in an ADU. And can people, this is for my own information, that I thought we couldn't build in pole barns. Can, can people put living structures or bathrooms in pole barns and garages?
So it can't be, it can't be lived in full-time, so.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I would say, you know, a kitchenette with a fridge would be okay. But when you start adding bathroom facilities, that raises red flags for the planning department. Because you can only have one dwelling per parcel.
Gotcha.
We don't want to allow. More than one parts or dwelling.
Gotcha.
The situation of the two houses that were built, or one was at least built with the intention of being a bear, of being an Airbnb, was out of compliance. So, so there's, so the status quo is a problem. Because, because the status quo, which, which disallows short-term rentals, but doesn't obviously disallow short-term rentals, the problem.
The Planning Commission did look at a set of zoning ordinance amendments, which amended the definition of, uh, bed and breakfast, um, to include a short-term rental. And the short-term rental had to meet all of the regulations for, uh, bed and breakfast. And that was then especially in use in Lake Residential and also, I think, rural residential and ag.
And I think it's a special land use in all.
In all three of those zoning districts. So then that would get an extra level of scrutiny to it, um, that you don't have for, let's say, a single-family house. So everybody within three hundred feet would be notified. And it's a decision where the Planning Commission can much more easily say no, because they have a discretionary decision rather than an administrative decision.
Is the definition of that still that it's a, within, the bed and breakfast is within a primary residence?
Yeah, it would be within a primary residence. You could expand that to say that it could be within just a building that's on the property.
Right.
And that might be more appropriate for something like in, in agricultural. What, but also on the lakefront residential, it might not, it might be different. So you were looking at that, probably the most appropriate thing to do would be to direct the Planning Commission to reevaluate short-term rentals as, uh, bed and breakfast in the zoning ordinance. And then it's up to you whether you, and then you would not have the things, you would probably not have the ordinance forty-five. Or you might want to take some things from the draft ordinance forty-five and put those in the bed and breakfast regulations.
Could we provide clearer language? That short-term rentals, I, I mean, I know this is, this is already embedded in statute, but could we be very explicit and say short-term rentals are, are disallowed except as? I know, but I mean, people were standing up and arguing about that, even though it's clearly true in statute. They don't understand. It, they don't understand it and um, it's causing people to run short-term rentals.
Cause it doesn't say no.
Yeah, so what could be done in, in the bed and breakfast regulations? Those be amended to clearly state that a short-term rental where the owner is not present and it hasn't been, and they haven't gotten a, and they haven't got, where, where an owner is not present is not allowed in the extra township. You could put those in those rules in that section.
But then we, to the, to the point that Fletcher made earlier, that the master plan right now i- is against using accessory dwelling units for short-term rentals. So we would we would need to also change that if that were the.
They, I don't think it says either way on the bed and breakfast that it could, I think it's silent as to whether it's in a accessory dwelling, a, an accessory building or not. I, I think it just says up, uh, on the premises or in the house. And I think Fletcher's looking it up. Will get that language for you. But if you felt strongly that it shouldn't be in an accessory dwelling unit, um, you could also have that specifically stated in those rules for bed and breakfasts.
Or would we state, if we felt strongly that it should be, would we state that?
You could state that and you, the master plan is always a guide. Or you could have different regulations for agricultural zones and lake residential zones. You could say it would be appropriate to have bedrooms or bedrooms for a bed and breakfast in an accessory building in agricultural and rural residential, but not allow that in lake residential.
Do we have any lake residential properties with ADUs that would qualify under our guidelines?
You probably do.
And what would be the enforcement considerations for trying to figure out if an owner is actually at the residence?
So with a special land use permit, it's a one-time permit that is done with the, with a zoning, with that special land use hearing and given by the planning commission that runs with the land. You, again, if you felt like you wanted to be able to check in once a year, or you wanted to be able to rescind that more easily, we, you could have other rules built in under the bed and breakfast to say you need to get a bed and breakfast license. And then the bed and breakfast license might have all these things that are things that you, you feel are important from ordinance forty-five.
So things like the fire inspections and, okay.
Would it be reasonable to require that the property be a homestead, have a homestead, be the homestead?
Well, I think, I think that would uh, be implied. The current ordinance says that the bed and breakfast facility shall be a single-family dwelling, which is operated and occupied by the owner of the dwelling. So the current ordinance implies that that owner is in the house. And if that's the case, they're in there full-time, it'd be that homestead or the, their principal property.
And I know we didn't ask for this, so you all may not be prepared to answer it, but i- if you had to guess, how many uh, ADUs do you think would be eligible throughout the township?
I don't know. I mean, I think if you're really concerned about ADUs and like residential, then specifically, then build that rule. Ask the planning commission to build that rule into a ru- rule for bed and breakfast. Because you could have right now, you could have somebody come for a bed and breakfast. Say, I'm going to use these two buildings that are on my lake residential lot. They qualify with parking, cause let's say they're big enough. Um, which is gonna be hard, hard for most, for, for most one, most, and any one of this use, these uses. And um, they, they could get that like, they could get that short-term, they could get that special land use. So I would say, no matter what, if you're concerned about that, build that into your regulations now. Whether it's a bed and breakfast or a short-term rental.
But I'm also wondering about contig- so, so the reason I'm thinking about this, the original complaint arose when a property had been operating as a bed and break, ha- as a, as a short-term rental with the owner next door. And then that owner sold it to someone who bought it, assuming that because she believed that because it had been operating as a short-term rental, it was allowable. But it wasn't actually allowable, but there had never been any complaints. And the reason there hadn't been complaint, the reason the complaints started to arise was because there was no property, there was no parking for the short-term rental, but the contiguous homeowner had been allowing the guests to park on his property. Because they were two contiguous properties, but operating as one under the same ownership. And so and, but when he sold it and it continued to operate as a short-term rental, but with no parking, then the neighbors started complaining because the cars were parked out in the street.
And the people weren't there, right? The owners weren't there.
Right, and the owners weren't there. So, but, but, but really the problem was that there was no parking. And then, and, and the guests were parking on the street and blocking traffic and it was causing a problem. So, so where the owner is present, whether it's an accessory dwelling unit or a contiguous property, in reality, we've had fewer problems. Do we want to allow that? I mean, I don't know how many of those nine or twelve operating uh, short-term rentals have the owner present.
Yeah, so you could build in that, you could build in like in that scenario that when they got the special land use permit, it could be conditioned upon those lots have to be combined. Or deed restricted in some way so that they're sold together if it continues to operate as a short-term rental. So.
We do that currently with um, non-contiguous accessory buildings.
Yeah.
We look, require deed restrictions.
But they wouldn't be able to be combined because it would have two residents, right? Like there would be two houses on.
Be two houses on them and then they would have to be, so that it it's difficult. It's sticky. And everything in the lake is gonna be sticky.
Everything.
I guess I, what I'm struggling with at this point is I agree completely with what trustee Nolte said earlier. I don't think we should be spending any tax dollars on helping people operate a commercial enterprise essentially. And so I, I'm struggling, even if we allow, we are talking about so few, the other part of this to me is we are talking about so few properties that it seems like we are expending resources and spending a lot of time for less than a dozen homeowners in the, in the community. I, that's where I'm really struggling with um, with how we do this effectively, if at all. And I, I, you know, at this point, I'm leaning towards there's not really a way to do it that isn't going to cause us, uh, you know, some additional costs, but also um, just the hoops of, of all of the things we have, you know, that we would, that we would put in place. So that, that, and then the other side of that though, is some of these are operating and right now we have no regulations. So it's, it's hard to to like sort of parse those two things. Um, that's where I'm struggling with it, but I just, to benefit you know, eight to twelve homeowners, um, when we have twenty-eight hundred homes, that's, that's hard for me to, to see benefit in that.
I, I agree one hundred percent with that. If we do the one percent cap and it's nine homes and I forget how many in the ag. Um, but it'd be nine, basically nine in the lake. It seems like most of the programs that we've installed or we have launched have had a lot of concern about what percentage of our residents are going to be affected and are going to be able to take advantage of it or are good, you know, are gonna benefit from what we're doing. And we've spent an enormous amount of time discussing this. And when we come down to it, we're talking ten, twelve homes?
It's a difficulty, it's maybe.
But people don't have the, the guideline to go. So maybe right now it's ten to twelve homes, but it could be possibly more.
But not if we, if we cap it, and I think looking at putting on the cap was a lot of concerns about our community and what happens to the viability of people buying homes versus other people buying rentals and keeping our community a community and not turning into, I mean, the, one of the points of putting a cap on was to keep our community a, a community and not have become a a tourism and a rental facility and remove the opportunity to buy homes in our township. I mean, I don't know if, once you establish a cap, why we would, we would raise that cap, we would say, oh, now we want five percent. I don't, I don't see that.
Well, the cap is, we don't have to have a cap, but I, I, I think it's a difficulty because it's a difficulty that arises from the fragmented form of government that is townships. Because if, if the county as a whole were to develop a short-term rental ordinance, if we didn't have townships and zoning that happened at the county level, and they had restrictive ordinances that let in two hundred properties across the county, we could pay, the county could pay for enforcement for those two hundred rental units. But when we're fragmented and each township has its own short-term rental and then must have its own short-term rental enforcement, we can generate such a tiny amount of money for that, that we can't support the cost of enforcement. And it's a bind that is created by the structure of government, of our government in Michigan. Doesn't exist in most states, but in, but in Michigan, we have townships that, that create these ordinances. And we're too small, our population is too small. If we were Canton and had a population of a hundred and ten thousand or, or some other larger township, we could, we could potentially generate enough revenue, but we can't, we can't. So I don't, I don't see how we can get out of the bind of generating very little revenue from short-term rentals. Expecting to do proactive enforcement, then expecting not to subsidize it with, with government dollars. I, I can't see a way out of that. That's why I was suggesting the, the bed and breakfast where the owner is present. And then we could continue with reactive enforcement, which is not very expensive.
And also I know there's been conversation on the state level. And in conversations with um, representative Conglin and um, Sue Shank, that the state is not interested in voting on short-term rental regulations, that they really want local municipalities. So I don't think we can kick the can and say, oh, let's wait for a state. Um, I don't see that happening. And that's what they've informed me of, so just as an FYI.
I do think as we, I, I've, I've been thinking a lot about this. Um, I do think as we move forward, you know, we've, we've heard from the community, I, I would say, even though you know, the, it may be different at the public hearings, the people that I've heard from, it seems pretty well split. Um, between people who would like us to allow it and people who do not want us to allow it. Um, for, for varying reasons. And I think we can, you know, be creative about the ways that we may look at it in the future. Um, for example, knowing that it would be allowed in commercial areas in future land use maps in our next master plan, I was thinking we could do things like, you know, adding future land use around the lakes in certain areas as commercial. Um, where that way it would be designated, people would know, you would still allow people to come in um, to the community, those types of things. Just, and, and that's just one example. I mean, just trying to get creative as to how we solve the issue. But a- as of right now, I just, you know, looking at the numbers, looking at the feasibility, I, I, I mean, especially the fact that if we went with the recommendation, none of the currently operating short-term rentals would would be eligible. I mean, that, that to me says the most. Um, yeah, and that, and I mean, that we have none even in ag or commercial, right? That are, so the reality is, even if we went with the regulations that we were talking about, we would be eliminating all of them. Now, maybe the decision is we want to do that because then the regulations are on the books and that makes it clearer. Um, but I think we should be clear, I said this at the last meeting, I, I just think we should be clear about whether or not we are doing a denial or an approval. I, I think, you know, the the planning commission recommendation to me was still sort of a denial of the lake areas. I think looking at these numbers, you know, it seems like every, no matter what we did, uh, would be actually a denial. Um, unless we make some changes. So I, I think if we, if we want to make changes to the bed and breakfast or those types of things, that we should just be very clear about that. But understanding that both the recommendations that came to us would essentially mean that we have zero short-term rentals operating in the township.
Can, can I just ask a question on the issue of short-term rentals versus bed and breakfast? Are those two separate issues? I mean, can we, I, I kind of feel like short-term rental the way I feel about single hauler, like this is, you know, it's been long and talked about a lot and is it, can we make a decision ultimately on short-term rental and then come back and visit the, the um, the B and B, like to do a, or is that messier?
I think you're not giving folks clarity on what they're allowed to do, if they want to do a short-term rental. So I would think of
Are you considering a bed and breakfast a short-term rental?
It's nuanced because of the building, the, the, the building dwelling, the auxiliary dwelling, sorry.
And there can be several types of short-term rentals. Some municipalities regulate short-term rentals by is the owner occupied and the owner stays there the entire time. Usually that's like a hosted short-term rental, which essentially is a bed and breakfast. Cause you're there. Um, also it could be a homeowner. Um, and that they can leave the premises and the other folks are there. And folks are there for the weekend, but they only rent it out for a very short amount of time. It's not a full-time. It's not a full-time use of that building or property. Third type of short-term rental is a full-time use of the, of the short-term rental where it's rented out for the majority of the year. So if you wanted to just allow the short-term rental type where someone has to be there when the guests are there, that's the same as what your bed and breakfast is. But you could just allow that under the zoning ordinance and tweak some language in the zoning ordinance to make it a lot clearer that this is the only route.
And that you don't have to feed them breakfast.
And include a building that's on the property.
You could change the rules so it's explicit that there are certain circumstances where you could use a building on the property. It doesn't have to be the house per se. What I'm hearing from you though, and what I've heard from your community, what I've observed is what goes on in your ag and your rural residential, just purely based on the size of the parcels is a lot different than the lake residential and your planning council. I would urge you to maybe differentiate between those zoning districts in terms of using, allowing the use of an accessory building.
I agree with that.
Other questions? I, I wanna, I wanna get, we'll get through questions and for um, Megan and Fletcher. And then I want to talk specifically about like the three options and the things that we will consider at the next meeting, because we will have several. Um, we have several options of what we can do. Obviously, we've been talking about those, but we also will have to address the planning commission uh, recommendation uh, around the house that started all of this, uh, which is separate from our decision around what the ordinance might look like. So want to make sure we get to all of that.
What do we have to do about that one house?
Well, they.
Oh, because it's a, whether it's going to be allowed or not allowed.
Uh, essentially the planning commission sent us a non-recommendation, uh, that the homeowner uh, paid for a, essentially a ruling of whether or not we would adopt Hamburg's, Hamburg, right? I always mix them up. Hamburg Town. I always mix them up. Hamburg Township's ordinance. And so we have to make a decision as to whether or not we are doing that. The planning commission has recommended that we not, that we not do that, but we will have to make a separate decision.
Disallow, if we, if, even if we said yes to Hamburg's ordinance, that house would still not meet the criteria. So we know that that, that, none of the proposals on the table
encompass that house.
Would, would create a situation where, where an Airbnb is allowable for that house because there's no prob, there's no parking.
That house is also up for sale right now.
That's interesting.
Well, yeah, and we can't make a decision based on the needs of one resident.
No, but they paid for a, a, a decision, so we have to make a decision.
Yeah, yeah, I hear that.
Gotcha.
Not, not on their property, not on their individual property, but on the Hamburg ordinance.
I see.
Any other questions for Fletcher and Megan?
Can I just ask, is there a, a simple and brief way to talk about the difference between the Hamburg ordinance and what we're proposing?
The big difference is Hamburg will allow short-term rentals on the lakes. What was recommended to you by the planning commission removed lakes from the ordinance and just allowed them in ag and commercial.
Okay.
And I think there, I don't know if it's in this one, it was in the other one. There's a chart in the, yeah, it's not in this packet, but there's a chart as well, Laura, that shows for the, the, the big packet from the short-term rentals committee, their report shows the pieces of the Hamburg ordinance, like it compares the ordinance compared to the recommendation.
But nothing on the table, I mean, I know you're going to talk about this, but nothing on the table solves the problem. If we say no, I mean, I mean, it, it sounds to me like we're tending toward everything on the table is not feasible, right? Because, because it's too small, it's too small a keyhole, and it doesn't generate enough revenue for enforcement.
For the lake community.
But it doesn't, well, for everything, because, because, because there isn't demand in the other, you know.
Oh, so that would infer any dollars.
There may be a bunch.
I'm going to say that, because in the October meeting, when we had that with the planning commission, this room, this room was packed with people.
October.
And in October twenty twenty-four, we had, the planning commission took, it was when the lady paid a thousand dollars, the homeowner, to
Yeah, that's what we're...
Be put on our agenda. There was a woman who came here, who taught, she's in the agriculture area, and she does rent. I will tell you this, she has not come to a single meeting since. But I don't think that just because you only found twelve on Dexter Township that that means there aren't more operating. One, Airbnb allows you to hide your address. So there's just a circle of where you could be. But I think, I think that there could be people in the agriculture area that are renting short-term rentals.
Who are interested.
But I think there are that are actually doing it, because this woman, she came up, she was advocating for us to allow it and to, I think that evening we were only talking about Lake Residential, and she wanted us to, she wanted to encourage us to include ag and rural residential zones to what we were considering that night. So I just want to make, I just want to make sure that we understand that just because we think nobody wants to do it in ag, that doesn't mean that's not actually already happening.
But even if, I, I, I think if, if we're making the assumption that we must do proactive enforcement, then it doesn't matter because we're not going to generate forty thousand dollars or thirty thousand dollars with eighty-five dollar fee for proactive. Now, we could say that we'll persist with reactive enforcement, which is what we have now. We generally have had few complaints, except when the, the owner isn't present, you know, which includes that huge big house and the, the lady that bought the, the place next door to the guy that used to operate. So the only complaints that we know of have been where the owner isn't present.
Right, or it wouldn't be allowed anymore.
So we could, we could agree as a board that we're applying to continue reactive enforcement with the fees of eighty-five dollars or forty dollars or whatever we decided, generating very little money, using the licensing process to, to ensure good actors upfront, and assuming that if we, that if the licensing process is robust and the owner is present, that reactive enforcement would be sufficient.
And are you talking about that in the ag district or in both districts?
I think we would have to go back to, we would have to, I don't think we have anything on the table right now that is, that is, we would have to give direction and ask for more work.
The planning commission has, has made the recommendation to disallow in lake, but allow in ag. And then we would be changing how we're going to enforce in ag.
Well, that was because in ag, so first of all, in the master plan, right, right, I think it's two paragraphs above the ADU, you know, to discourage short-term rentals with ADUs, two, I think it's two paragraphs above that. We also want to encourage agritourism. And ADUs imply that the owner is on the property, which, which seems to me a better solution than an owner who lives in Florida and is renting a house in Dexter Township. In, in addition to that, agriculture, you know, you've got five acres minimum. So they're going to be less likely to have all this environmental issues where you're disturbing your neighbors, that you're, you're creating all this extra enforcement. And parking wouldn't be, would not be as an issue in water environment, exactly. So it, it seemed that agriculture, allowing it in agriculture would be a better solution to be able to say yes to some. It wasn't a say no without saying no. Now, if you kept the cap, but that cap, that was just introduced to highlight if we didn't have a, you know, to have a cap to kind of highlight how many in each zone. It wasn't meant to be a strict, because with agriculture, you probably might not have to cap it. The other thing too is, is if somebody has a license and we find that they're committing violations, we can suspend their license. And then in that case, they can't even do any short-term rentals. So we have the ability to suspend their license until they pay, reimburse the township for cost of enforcement.
But even that, I think we would have to make a, just game, like, either way, I think we have to send that back to the, because what the planning commission sent us did not include any of the, like, the, the regulations, right, from four, from ordinance forty-five? So we, right, so we would have to, we would, we would have to, I mean, that's a board decision, so we would have to figure out those regulations if we wanted to impose things like licensing and that would be separate from what the part, the planning commission sent us, right?
If you want a license that you could easily revoke, as Trustee Abbott described, you should have a license that's in a standalone ordinance that is required for that use in zoning ordinance. So the zoning ordinance would say a bed and breakfast is a special lane use in these districts. And amongst the regulations it must need is it has to have a bed and breakfast permit per ordinance X. And that the reason that the, the planning commission looked at that draft forty-five, ordinance forty-five, they didn't act on it because they're not enabled to by state law. That's your...
Yeah. Do you think, just this, again, putting you on the spot for things that I didn't, do you think that we should change the wording so that we're not calling them bed and breakfasts and just call them owner-occupied short-term rentals? Or is there a reason to leave it as bed and breakfast? Or is that, I, I just feel like that's one of the things that's causing confusion.
You could change it. There is state, there, bed and breakfast does have some regulations around it.
Okay.
And you could, it's kind of a, a square rectangle situation where I would say you need to define it, but then it could be that an owner-occupied short-term rental is also known as a bed and breakfast from the definition.
How many homes are in the ag?
I'm not sure about homes, but parcels, I guess a hundred and fifty.
Hundred and fifty parcels are in agriculture residential.
What about rural residential?
I am not sure. I would need to get back to you on that.
I, I have a question, and I know it's a little off-topic, but I was looking at this map, and where ag exists, right? And the corner where Hillside Acres is being built is not light, is, it doesn't have the light green. Okay, I can't find my page. Oh, maybe it's page twenty-four. Yeah. I mean, that's still zoned ag.
I think that it's the...
Open space community, right?
It was an open space community. So I, I think that map shows our ag zoning where the minimum lot size is. So Hillside Acres wouldn't show up because it's a open space community and the lots are smaller because they were clustered.
So what is it zoned then? I mean, if it's not showing up as light green, and I, I'm sorry, I just don't understand the distinction.
Anything that was zoned ag on that map, so with, is light green on the zoning map, but did not match the minimum lot size, was taken off. So that, that map could just show the eligible properties.
So the houses in the new development would not qualify because their lot size is small?
Yes.
But, but if, but rural residential would include where Brad lives and where I live, which are riverfront properties, which could be desirable for short-term rentals, but they're rural, they're not, they're, they're not lake, so they're waterfront but not lakes, and they're less irregular.
Are they zoned rural residential?
Mine is, I don't know if yours, yeah.
Even at ten acres?
Mine is five acres. I don't know.
That's a little over four.
And I'm a little over ten, and I'm rural residential, so that's when it doesn't fall into a very fair, you know, idea where agritourism is a hundred acres across the street from my property, for instance, but because we're considered, or we're labeled rural residential, we couldn't take advantage of having a bed and breakfast. I'm not saying I want a bed and breakfast at all, but just for those, those homeowners, when you're stating, you know, the, the closeness of proximity of these properties, especially in the lake areas, where here are properties that definitely comply with having the open space.
But the planning commission said that would be okay. They made their recommendation that...
Just for ag?
It was for ag and rural residential.
And commercial.
Oh, it was just ag, and, oh, there was no rural residential?
Well, and it's not clear about auxiliary dwellings. It's, it's not, it's saying bed and breakfast, short-term rental is okay in ag, but it's not very clear about what can you use, what, what buildings can you use on your property in ag? As far as I saw.
Currently, bed and breakfasts are a special lane use in the township. They're special in use in ag, rural residential, lakes residential, and recreation conservation. So the board wanted staff to investigate expanding the uses in bed and breakfasts. We could also consider keeping all the same zoning districts that are allowed and expanding that definition. I would say ultimately, the, the best thing about bed and breakfasts currently is that all the neighbors would be notified if somebody wanted to apply to become one. So people could voice their concerns at the planning commission meetings.
So anybody filing to do a bed and breakfast in a agriculture would have to file. All the neighbors get notified, the neighbors go to the planning, the planning commission determines whether to allow or disallow.
Yeah.
Correct. And it's a three hundred dollar fee, special land uses.
Per year?
It's a one, a one-time fee. The, the special land use runs with the land, unless revoked by the planning commission or if the use changes.
So if somebody, if one homeowner has a special land use permit on their farm, and they sell their house, that permit goes with the home?
Yes.
So it's okay.
But it's also specific to that bed and breakfast has to function in the home, not an exterior dwelling on the property.
As things are currently, yes.
So what's the expanded definition then? Because that sounds narrowly, that sounds narrow.
So you could direct the planning commission to, you could say, I want you to change, I want you to expand the definition of a bed and breakfast to be an owner-occupied term rental. And in the agricultural district, let's say, to allow that there are bedrooms are allowed in accessory dwelling units or accessory structures, accessory buildings.
That might get a little messy with sewer and everything. Well, there's no sewer, it'll be septic probably.
It would all be septic, and that's, and that's things that you would check at your shopping cart. So, and then just direct the planning commission to make those changes, and then they would make, they would make those have the, and then it would come back to you. If that's what you have the majority of folks to hold for.
And what other reg, we would have to come up with any additional regulations, right? I mean, like, I, this is a far-fetched example, but, so we have someone who has a farm. They say, I'm going to operate a bed and breakfast, here's my, my fee, they get approved, and the bed and breakfast is a bunch of bunk beds in a barn. Like, that's, that would be acceptable under our current ordinance.
Yes.
So we would have to come up with any kind of fire regulations or
Plumbing.
Plumbing or bedroom.
Building code, which is, and you don't roll, so if, if they were going to have sleeping quarters, fire code kicks in, building code kicks in, and you wouldn't have to have those necessarily. It's just when it's a single-family home, then there's different codes in the building code and in the fire code that the building department and the fire department do not have as much authority to come in and inspect.
Sure, but an accessory dwelling unit, we, we would already be expecting that...
If they're going to have a certain amount of people in there, you could, and you could just say all applicable building and fire codes have to be met, and then that empowers your staff or consultants enough to go to the building department or the building authority that you use and the fire department that you use to say, this is what they're proposing, what do they need in terms of, does it need to be sprinkled, does it not? Because there's just a lot of complications in terms of like the number of people in a room. Sometimes you have to have it sprinkled, sometimes you have to have, but it's not with your wild to put that in the zoning ordinance.
Sure. Well, that's, I, I guess that's part of my, so I'm thinking more about some of the loc, so if we're talking about a farm and they have an accessory dwelling unit that they're going to use, and it is a half acre beyond their main residence, and there's no access for the fire department. So something, you know, I, I'm just thinking through all of the pieces of like, it sounds great, like I've, you know, I've put up a, a pre-built shed, and now it's this nice area, and I've attached electricity and all these things to it. But if there's no way for public safety to get there, or there's no, like, I just want to make sure that if we're, if we are opening that up, that we make sure that on the other end, we are regulating if we are opening that up, that we make sure that on the other end, we are regulating all of those pieces, um.
And any special land use usually goes through, is forwarded to the fire chief. And if there are building issues that are unusual, usually your staff or consultants would reach out to the building official. If you want that to be absolutely have to happen, you could write in the zoning ordinance.
And then it's the landowner's responsibility, right?
Yeah.
To adhere to those standards. Not the township.
The township's responsible for seeing that there's basic health, safety and welfare.
But that's what I mean is we would, we would want to make sure that we have any of that built in on the, on the front end for what they would have, you know, the minimum requ- in the same way that we looked at, you know, for this many people, you need this amount of space, you need this many fire extinguishers, you need whatever. Um, we would want to do that still for this.
So are we still talking about disallowing it completely in the lake districts? Reconsidering the, the planning commission's proposal, which would support the master plan policy goals, but would be a high level of effort for a small number of potential operators.
Is that what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're talking about all the options. I, I personally am still in the same place I was earlier that this is, i- it seems like high level of work. Yes. A- and, and either way we go, i- it, it's going to be resources from the township for some of the enforcement and, and those pieces.
I have to put some resources into at least clarifying, at a minimum, we have to clarify the language of the bed and breakfast ordinance. If we do, if we want to have it disallowed except for bed and breakfast as narrowly defined, we still have to work on the language of, of the zoning ordinance to clarify, to make it crystal clear. But short term rentals except as defined here are disallowed. So some level of effort has to be.
And the planning commission did look at some amendments that were of that name. So those can easily be forwarded greater worth consideration in between.
So other thoughts, comments? Um, I know we, we briefly touched on it earlier, but again, we will have to make a decision as well about the recommendation from the planning commission around, uh, the request for Hamburg's ordinance. Are there any comments or questions about that?
Not regarding Hamburg, but just to clarify in my own little head. So come the September meeting, what are we going to, we're going to be addressed with either allowing or disallowing? And creating the next set of zoning questions that we want? Is that where we're going in September?
So we will have two separate agenda items currently. Uh, one is the recommenda- to take action on. One is the recommendation from the planning commission to allow short term rentals in ag and commercial. Um, because we need to take a formal action on that. The second is, um, the Hamburg township ordinance request. We'll have to take action on that and the recommendation from the planning commission there. And then I'm, it sounds like I'm hearing that we also then want to send um, or discuss either ordinance, uh, ordinance changes. This is where I will need a little help from you all. If it's ordinance forty-five, that's us as a board. So if it is any restrictions, we will need to send or to decide those as a board. If it is simply a change to our zoning ordinance around bed and breakfast, we will need to send that to the planning commission. So we have a couple of options still, um, that we will really need to decide. But the first two for sure, because those were recommendations directly from the planning commission. I think we will also, um, my intent is to also have a lifting of the moratorium that we put on enforcement as a part of the September meeting so that we can officially vote to do that, so that enforcement um, can start taking place pending the decision. I mean, if we, if we make a decision to make changes, maybe we leave that for another month, but um, I think that way we can provide clarity to folks.
Okay, thank you.
So I think with our last fifteen minutes, it would be good to hear from folks where they're feeling at this point around whether or not we want to address ordinance forty-five and the restrictions. Or if folks are feeling more like we are just redefining bed and breakfast and not opening up additional use cases or the need for the changed ordinance forty-five, because it would be nice to be able to bring those directly to the meeting if we have a sense of where the board, what the board would like to see.
Just to be clear, I think Fletcher's analysis or Fletcher and Megan's analysis showed that ordinance forty-five is proposed. It's a very narrow window that nobody can get through right now, so.
But that's why I said if we wanted to make changes. So if, if we were, for example, if we were going to set regulations around, um, needing a license and those types of things for the bed and breakfast, we would need to change and implement ordinance forty-five to match with that. If we are just deciding that we're only changing bed and breakfast to narrowly say this is, uh, this also includes owner occupied, short term rentals with no additional regulations, then we wouldn't need to do that. I think the sense I'm getting from everybody was that part of the, the intent was to do, to do outline regulations or licensing if we were allowing them at all. But I, I think we just need to confirm that because that would mean that we would have to change ordinance forty-five. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah.
Go ahead Fletcher.
So, uh, ultimately, um, with the planning commission's recommendation for short term rentals and the ag and commercial districts, you would need to direct staff to amend the draft ordinance forty-five and come back to the board with those changes showing the licensing procedures and requirements for just those districts. If you choose to deny or not adopt what the planning commission's giving you, you could direct staff to work with the planning commission to amend bed and breakfast definition and to add zoning regulations. So I would say, if you choose to not adopt, you're also choosing not to adopt ordinance forty-five. But that's something to consider if, um, you want a standalone ordinance.
Okay, so I like the idea of rephrasing the language in the B and B, bed and breakfast, um, which tell me if I'm correct, includes rural residential, ag, commercial and lake. I think that
Special land use it does currently.
I think that just, i- it makes it fair for all landowners and, um, if, if, if a homeowner is present, that um, hopefully would make the neighbors more comfortable as well. And would we then be able to leave the existing ordinance as is with reactive enforcement? So that's, that's it. But with just tweaking that language and sending it back to the planning commission for our current, because we, we have two current ordinances, right? One is we allow bed and breakfasts. And we could tweak that ordinance
Yes.
Language. And currently we allow no short term rentals in Dexter Township as al- at all with reactive code enforcement.
Other thoughts, questions, Laura?
I just still, I, I mean, I feel very mixed about it. I, I feel that even in the lake regions, if you have an owner occupied space and a, uh, an accessory dwelling. I was talking to, you know, one of the homeowners where there's these big things going up next to her and and she felt that's a different, that that's a different issue. And that in order to have some flexibility um, for people who can do this in a way that is still protects the lake, still protects the neighborhood. I just feel like we should allow it. Um, the, of, and, and, but I do think it means visiting this accessory building issue. Accessory dwelling even on, even on the lakes. I don't think it should be just for agricultural and commercial necessarily. Something in between.
But wouldn't the bed and breakfast extend to the lakes if we change the language?
So it would, if we, if we
Well, it already does because it's a special land use. So it's, doesn't matter where in the township.
But it doesn't use, it doesn't say it's okay for accessory
Yeah, I thought it was
It has to be in your house.
Right.
Yeah.
Which I think that, uh, I think that would be very difficult, accessory dwellings on the la- on the lakes. I think it's going to be a really difficult thing to, to figure out. Uh, because we don't want to allow, in my opinion, secondary structures on the lakes in that way. And I, I don't know. I think that opens up a whole other set of issues around enforcement.
They already exist. I mean, it, can you? Yeah, I'm not suggesting that that you open up building, you know, a bun- building a bunch of those, but I'm talking
If a neighbor
Already existing mother-in-law apartments.
I just, I wonder, I mean, I'm getting really tired.
We're almost done.
And mentally fatigued, you know, I feel mentally fatigued, but I feel like there is this other issue around the aesthetics and land use on the lakes that isn't that doesn't fall under the ages. I know Karen didn't agree with me. She said that in very strong terms, but I do think that these large houses, very large buildings are coming up on the lakes that doesn't have anything to do with short term rentals and it changes the aesthetics. I live, I walk down to Base Lake a lot because it's right around the corner from me, but it's not in Dexter Township. And I would say ninety percent of the homes on Base Lake have been, with little homes in the time I've been there, have been replaced. There's only like two of those little homes from the forties left. And every property has a very large
Right.
Unit with a very large separate unit that has a second floor that, and, and I, I think that our zoning ordinance doesn't prevent that right now. And we can go that way. Maybe we think that's okay, but maybe we don't want that. And I don't think that disallowing short term rentals will prevent that from happening. I just don't. I think people are doing it right next door to us because they want to have big houses on the lakes. And, um, I, I just, I, so I think there's a sec- another issue here that's embedded in all this that might be worth taking up.
I just think there's more conversation. I don't know, because now you bring up another point, Base Lake is
It's not our lake.
But you, you, they're buying two lots, ripping them down, and then they're able to build the large homes.
That's happening everywhere.
I know, but, and then you can put that
Against that, I'm against.
But you can then put that smaller
But some of the people that came and spoke were against that.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying. And they came and spoke because of the short term rentals topic. And one of those buildings it was intended to be put to use as a short term rental incorrectly, but forbidding short term rentals won't prohibit those kinds of big houses from coming up. So prohibiting short term rentals won't solve that problem.
Oh, I, I agree one hundred percent.
If we consider that a problem, maybe we don't consider it a problem.
Um, any, any additional comments, questions? Concerns? Does everyone feel like they have all the information that they need, um, to make determinations on single hauler and short term rentals, uh, at the September meeting? And if not, what things do you need for us to prepare to make sure that we have them at that meeting?
I think we have a lot of information, which is great. And, uh, but it doesn't clarify. I, I, I always feel like clear as mud, right? Because it doesn't clear, there's, it's, it's almost like it's a binary issue. I'm not going to, I can say right now, I'm not going to vote for something that doesn't feel complete. Just like the an- animal ordinance, like I want to get it right the first time, not, and even if it has to go back. Um, I don't want to vote for something with the retrospect, the idea that we're going to go back to this and back to that, because we don't. Is what my experience, the marijuana ordinance is an example, the, um, that we don't go back. So I can just say if it doesn't feel right, if it doesn't feel nuanced and right and fitting for us the first time, I'm probably going to say, no, let's keep working on it.
Sure. So what thi- I, but that's part of my question. What things do you need for September?
I guess, um, a redefinition of that and breakfast, a look at this auxiliary dwelling unit idea, even on the lakes. I guess more, more language and information about what would that be like to do something in between?
But it's something in between and I, I am following what you're saying because I feel the same. I feel that people should have if they're not living in their, their lake home all year long and you just shut the doors and you pay for it, fine, it's your property. But it's a good thing, I personally think, to continue to keep
To have people in it.
Have it in it. First, they, they, they enjoy it. They make their memories. Absolutely. They're paying the homeowner, but that's their property. And they're also, you know, spending money in the community that they're, they're spending their short amount of time in. But also I do understand the parking situation, the close proximity. I think a fair, um, idea is prime, I mean, Base Lake is the perfect example. We do a lot of work in that area and it's shocking how much it has changed. Um, but if people choose to buy two lots and build their big beautiful house and have that, that small building, if they, if they do turn it into a bed and breakfast, you know, they're they don't just have, i- it's not that income driven property where a person purchases it just to make money. They're never there. They don't care about their neighbors. They're not community. Where if they, they, they do build that house and they have that little small house and they are uh, bed and breakfast, you know, they are community. They are making sure that they care about their neighbors because they're present. So I think that gives that that definition of as people are going to continue to build the big, beautiful homes on the lake, I mean.
No, I don't think building the big, beautiful homes on the lake is the issue. And if you interpreted that in my way, that is not what I
No, I'm not.
Because that is inevitable.
But you have to have that space.
You have to have the space. You have to have, it, it is, it is going to change. It's natural to change the lake. We've, we've all seen it change in the last ten, fifteen years since I've been out. Heck, I'm one of those changers. I came out and
I mean, we don't, we don't have time. I mean, we're just, we're revisiting these. Lani's just asking us, what do we need in September to make a decision not to re- not to relitigate all these topics that we've already talked about?
So let's just go down, we've got about four minutes left. I'm going to just go down and call on everybody. And if there's any information that you feel like you need for September, um, say it. If not, don't, and then we'll move on. And that way we'll make sure we have everything we need. Trustee Nolte.
Um, I would like to see a, an impact study, kind of. And I don't mean a study. I use that word, but I don't. I think we sit here and we talk a lot about, uh, parking, but we're not talking about the other impacts that are happening on the neighborhoods. And I think that should happen. And I'd also like to know what percentage of agriculture, agricultural that the planning commission gave, what number are we talking? Are we talking ten homes? Twelve homes, like?
They didn't?
They didn't.
All right, trustee Abbott.
Uh, no, I have everything I need.
Uh, treasurements?
I do just have one thing that was mentioned, Fletcher. I think you had mentioned it, um. Would, I, I didn't know whether this was in response to a question or whether it was that you could possibly do something along these lines, but is it that the, anybody that has an Airbnb It has to be their homestead residence, is that how it's? Is that right?
For bed and breakfast?
I'm sorry, for a bed and breakfast, it has to be their primary homestead residence? Is that?
They need, it needs to be owner occupied, so property owner needs to live in that house while renting it out for the bed and breakfast.
Okay, but they, they could live there three months a year and during those three months treated as a bed and breakfast?
Correct, yeah, it doesn't specifically imply.
Okay.
Principal residence.
Uh, clerk Samuel.
I have everything I need.
Uh, trustee Sanders.
So, to about what?
Okay, trustee Sikkenga.
I mean, I think the question on the table will be, do we adopt ordinance forty five and do we adopt the Hamburg ordinance, correct? Those are the questions that we have to decide in December.
September.
Uh, not ordinance forty five, it would be the two planning commission recommendations. So the first is ag and commercial only, or the, um. The request from Hamburg, the ordinance forty five is separate. Okay. All right, well, again, I thank everybody for your time, um, I know that. A nine to noon meeting uh, on a Monday morning is a little bit, uh, much. But uh, I'm glad that we were able to get through so much information, sounds like everyone got a lot of the information that they need. And look forward to seeing you all at the September meeting, the meeting is adjourned at eleven fifty nine.